It's four o'clock. Is the commission assembled? There's Jenna. I don't see John. And who else am I missing? Lee, I don't see Lee.
I don't see Lee. I think we and John.
Let me know when you find them, Scott.
Okay, I will.
With some weird audio there on my end. Did anybody else have that weird echo? Well, there's John. Hi. Oh, and there's Lee. Yay.
We've got everyone now, Karen.
Great. Thank you, Scott. Okay, it is 4:02 and I'm going to call the meeting of the Planning Commission demands needed to order. First order of business today is to approve the minutes of our May 16th, 2022 meeting. I'm assuming that the commission has read them and is prepared to tell me if there are any additions or corrections that need to be made.
Yeah, Karen.
Yes, sir.
But I'm curious, I guess a question more than a correction. On page two, section roman numeral six, item D, the last sentence refers to the city portion of the golf course. I was not city-owned any of the golf course.
Good point. I'm not sure what that would mean. Anybody have any ideas on that, or should we just strike that language?
Karen, we can re-listen to that portion of the meeting and see if there's clarification on that. Somebody may have referred to it as a city portion, but the city does not own that.
Okay, well, it looks like what this is a report of is the applicant's presentation.
We'll re-listen to that portion and clarify it.
I would really like to have this approval of these minutes today because we'll be referring, this is the record that we will be acting on, part of the record we'll be acting on today. So we either need to strike that language, city portion of, or clarify that the city doesn't own any part of the golf course.
No, why don't we strike it because the city doesn't own it?
Any other comments on that?
No, I'm fine with that, Karen.
Okay, let's strike the word city portion of. Thank you for that, Lee. Any other corrections? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes as submitted and corrected.
I'll make that motion.
Thanks, John. Is there a second? Was that Bert? Or was that Phil?
Phil.
Thank you, Phil. It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes as corrected. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, minutes are approved. Thank you. Earlier today, I circulated a memo to the commission that I want to read into the record for today's hearing so that everyone is clear on A, my comments to the commission outside of our meeting, and B, just so that everyone understands what today is all about. I encourage everyone to read the updated comments on the city's website. And I made a note that the city received a letter from Mr. Sorelli's attorney at Tonkin Torp or Torp-Tonkin. And I wanted to make sure that the commission understands that this is just another another comment on the record and is not considered legal advice to us as a commission. I'm also asking the commission to limit their questions and comments today to the criteria set forth in our ordinance as this is the only basis we should use for our decisions today. We cannot base our decisions on how either of the proposed developments will be operated or other considerations outside of our purview, only whether the project meets the requirements within our ordinances. Of course, if you feel additional comments, conditions, or modifications to the staff report or recommendations related to site improvements and safety are needed, please add them to this, to the discussion after we after we have closed the public input. Once we close that public testimony and I've heard from the applicant and staff, I intend to use a little different procedure for this meeting. This is one that we followed back when Owen Nicholson was chair. And it ensures that we put on the record the specific reasoning for our decision-making. So I will ask for your agreement or disapproval of the staff's findings for each of the major criteria set out for each of the proposals, the two proposals that we're hearing today. And then I'll ask for agreement or disapproval of each of the conditions in the staff report. So I hope you're prepared to yea or nay each wine item, which makes it a little bit longer meeting, but it makes it also very clear what our decision is today. Okay, and then after we've noted our agreement or disapproval of each of the conditions in the staff report, then we'll allow additional conditions to the findings as the commission sees fit. Excuse me, I have a terrible medication that makes my mouth dry, so I'll be chugging water throughout this thing. Okay, generally speaking, my name is Karen Reddick-Hirka. I am the Chair of the Manscaped Planning Commission, and I will be presiding over two hearings today. First, this is the time and place set for the public hearing in the matter of a request to construct a water pump station, a conditional use application by Jim Pence. I'm going to declare this hearing open. And some additional information, the decision to approve or deny this request will be based on the conditional use criteria contained in ordinance 95-4, sections 5.010 to 5.039 and 5.060, and the special residential recreation zone, SRR, standards in section 3.030. The specific criteria are summarized in the staff report and will be reviewed during this hearing. All testimony and evidence must be directed toward this approval of criteria or other criteria in the zoning ordinance which you believe may apply. Please note, in their decision, the planning commission may reject comments or ordinance citations that do not directly apply to this request. Note that an issue which may be the basis for an appeal to Luba must be raised not later than the close of the record at or following the final evidentiary hearing in this case. Such issues must include specific statements or evidence that allow the commission and those in attendance an adequate opportunity to respond. This case, like all of our cases, will proceed with the applicant's presentation, followed by the staff report, comments from those in favor of the request, and comments from those opposed to the application. Commission's staff and participants may direct questions to those who testified. And finally, the applicant will be given time for a rebuttal. Generally, the applicant is entitled to 20 minutes to make their presentation. All other speakers should try to limit your comments to three minutes. Please avoid repetition. If someone else has already expressed your thoughts, it is perfectly all right to state that you agree with the statements on the record of a previous speaker. If you have already sent a written response to the proposal, please do not repeat those written comments. They are already part of the record. Prior to the conclusion of the first hearing on a land use application, a participant may request an opportunity to present additional evidence or testimony regarding the application. If such a request is made, it will be up to the commission to determine if the hearing will be continued to a date and time certain, or if the record will be kept open for submission of additional evidence or testimony. If the record is kept open, it will be for a minimum of seven days with a short rebuttal period thereafter afforded the applicant. With that out of the way, I need to ask the audience if there are any objections to the notice that was sent for this hearing.
Karen, I have one hand raised. AG Areola, and I'm gonna unmute him. Go ahead, AJ. You should be able to unmute.
I'm sorry, I did not mean to raise my hand.
Okay.
Thank you. It just shows we're paying attention, right? Okay. So hearing none, I'm gonna ask the audience if you have any objections to the jurisdiction of this body to hear and consider this case. Scott will tell me if there are any.
Karen, I have no hands raised.
Okay. Are there any declarations of conflict or bias, ex parte contact, or site visits by the commission?
And I have no hands raised for that one either.
Does any member of the audience wish to challenge the right of any member of this commission to hear this matter by reason of actual or potential conflict of interest or bias?
And I have no hands raised for that question either.
Okay, thank you, Scott. So we are ready to proceed. Would Mr. Pence please give an overview of the proposed development to the commission?
Yes, I can. If I can share my screen. This is Jim with Encore and Pine Grove Properties. let me share the screen here. There we go. So what we're doing here, as you all know, we are adding to the the phases in our project, and we just completed phase four of the project. So overall, it looks like this. This is one through four. And as you see here, the elevation at Classic Street here is about 91 feet. And as we move up the hill here, we get up to 190 feet. So as you increase the elevation, it requires more pressure to get the water up to the higher houses or lots up on top there. So we're adding equipment to do that. And in doing that, we're proposing to put the system, the water system right here at the corner of Meadows Drive and Highlands Drive. And it will add water pressure to the whole all the way through the rest of the Highlands, which will include phases five and six. So we're adding this equipment, and it is pumps, its pressure tanks, its controls, electrical power, obviously. We have to we have to house all of this equipment. And in doing so, what they typically do is they put this equipment in a a module, more or less, that looks like this. And it's pretty common to use a fiberglass enclosure and have it out in the weather. And Rick and I looked at this and thought, well, okay, over time, it gets to look kind of you know, rough. And we weren't interested in having our our shelter for the equipment to look like this. So we thought we want it to blend into the neighborhood. We want it to look more like the houses that we have there rather than a fiberglass enclosure. So what we're proposing is to to build a structure that looks like some of the houses that we have up there. Where it really blends in, and as you can see here, it's, it would, it's wood-framed. It is I've got a picture of it here. If I can get rid of this. Hold on here. There we go. Okay. It's gonna look more like this. So it's wood-framed. It's got cedar shakes on it. It's got nice windows in it. It only has one light down-facing. And this is kind of, we went over this with Dan Wetzel and kind of came up with the look and feel of it. And this is what we're proposing to put on the corner of Highlands and Meadows Drive. So I think that kind of explains what we're up to there. If anybody's got any questions, I'd be happy to answer those. Anybody there?
Karen, you're muted.
I'm not playing with the full deck today. Thank you. Was that Jenna? That was, thank you. I'm sorry. I was gonna suggest that staff give its report on the proposal, and then the commission can direct questions to either either staff or applicant. So that's up to Walt.
Okay, thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. As Jim provided the outline and background information, here's some more details for the application. This, as you're aware, will be a freestanding structure at the location identified. This is part of tract H of the Meadows. It'll be about 323 square feet in area and about 13 feet in height. You've seen the exterior finish. And again, the whole goal was to make this thing matching within existing or potential homes in the area. This will be set back 15 feet to Highlands and over 27 feet to Meadows and well over 100 feet to the remaining yards. There's a garage entrance with the driveway facing Meadows. Lighting is limited to the garage indoor entrance. There is no generation as within this. Excuse me, I'm having my sinuses going too. There is no generator at this location, as the pumps are not for fire protection. There will be three pumps used to boost the water pressure. Two pumps are a third horsepower. The other is three-quarter horsepower. Finally, there's no expectation of pump noise outside the building. There will be no bulk chemicals stored or used at this site. Substation in the SRR zone is identified as a conditionally permitted use. And this is subject to a hearing before the planning commission. We did send notice of this request to affected agencies and owners and did not receive commentary. With regard to the conditional use, the provisions are found in sections 5.010 to 5.039. And I'm just gonna walk through these briefly. The item one looks at purpose, that is, section 5010 looks at purpose. A conditional use is required in certain situations. Again, this is listed as a conditional use in the SRR zone, subject to the planning commission authority and review, which also complies with provisions in section 5.020. Under 5.025, the planning commission reviews this, and the applicant must meet certain decision criteria. The first item is that the site is adequate for the size and shape to accommodate accommodate the said use. Track day contains approximately 3.7 acres and obviously can accommodate about a 300-square-foot structure. Please note that the development standards in the R3 zone apply to construction in the SRR zone. In this zone, the R3 zone, the minimum lot size is 5,000 square feet. Within-depth requirements are 60 and 90 feet. Setbacks are 20 on the front, 15 on the street side, 10 feet from the rear, and 5 feet along the side. Obviously, the three-plus-acre parcel exceeds all area and dimension requirements. And the building fronting, the street is 27 feet, which exceeds that setback, and also 15 feet on the other street side, exceeding that setback. Also, this proposal exceeds all of the other yard setbacks. And finally, the building location complies with the clear vision requirements in the code. Item number two, the site has adequate access to the public street or highway that affronts, in this case, this project fronts on two different streets with a single access to Meadows Drive. For Public Works, only weekly visits are planned to monitor the equipment. Existing street system is more than adequate, obviously, to accommodate this level of traffic. For other than-needed housing types, use will have no adverse effect on abutting property or permitted usage thereof. This is item three. This is a necessary facility to ensure adequate water pressure for domestic needs within the project. Equipment is housed within a structure that is residential in design will be generally compatible with area residences. The building height is approximately half of the 28-plus feet allowed in the zone. And public, for Public Works, the structure should be able to contain any noise generated by the equipment. Since this will not be occupied, and for reasons of public safety, the site does not include fencing or screening that may provide hiding spaces. Again, this is a matter of public safety. Undeveloped areas will remain in natural vegetation. The only lighting will be downward facing the accent, excuse me, accent light at the door and entrance to the garage entrance. There are no plans for installation of signs. And while the driveway is close to the intersection, site access is only weekly. Therefore, does not present a traffic hazard issue. The development ordinance does not include any parking space requirements for utility structures. This site plan does contain a single space for maintenance vehicles. I think, given the anticipated development or use of this site, the inclusion of one parking space should be adequate. And the space should be improved consistent with code requirements. Section 5.030 identifies standards for governing conditional uses. When approving a conditional use, there is a whole list of provisions that the planning commission may consider or apply to the case, including adjustments for lot size, number of vehicle access points, requiring screening, limiting location of signs, et cetera, is found in that section. I think, based on the earlier findings, this proposal meets or exceeds all the development requirements of the zone. And now, staff doesn't believe additional conditions beyond compliance with the submitted proposal are essential. Under section 5.032, case of use, existing prior to the date of this ordinance, classified as a conditional use, change or use shall conform with the current conditional use requirements. This section does not apply to the proposal. It's a new use, consistent with, designed to be consistent with our current standards. Under 5.033, the commission may require the applicant to furnish a performance bond. I think this option may be placed as a condition of approval. However, given the proposed use will effectively become part of the city's infrastructure, I think bonding would appear unnecessary. In addition to standards of the zone which the conditional use is located under 5.034, there are additional There are additional standards that may apply. I want to review that a little further in this report. Under sections 5.035 to 5.039. There is in general sort of housekeeping measures in terms of the procedure, the application process. The need for a hearing, the decision notice requirement, and finally, the time limits here. These are administrative by design and say if approved, the city and applicant must comply with these requirements. Finally. Under 5.060, this is what I alluded to. Under a public utility or communication facility. In considering a conditional use for this type of use, the commission shall determine that the site is located. To best serve the intended area with a minimum effect on surrounding properties. I think as noted in the previous findings, this facility is necessary to ensure water is available. And sufficient pressure to serve the Highlands development. Building, housing and pumping equipment is residential in character to meet visual impacts. And potential new of with potential new residences. All equipment will be located within the building. There will be no outdoor storage of material or equipment. And by eliminating fencing and vegetative screening, suggested that be a safety measure. As it doesn't contain hiding spots. With that, staff recommends that this application be approved, subject to the five conditions listed. All this briefly briefly summarized. Applicant will need to submit engineering plans. Also, the applicant will need to submit building plans. They need to conform to the proposal. Prior to operations, there must be a parking space conforming to our parking standards installed on the site. The building itself must comply with all building code requirements. And anything installed, obviously, the engineering plans. And the applicant is advised modifications to these may be subject to a new application. And the final condition, compliance with these conditions. And requirements of our zoning ordinance and building code requirements is the sole responsibility of the developer.
Did it again. Okay, are there any questions from members of the commission for either staff or Mr. Pence? Go ahead.
Are there any architectural features or mechanical features that are not shown on the roof plan or the elevations?
No.
And did I hear correctly that you are not going to have an auxiliary power source for this in case electricity drops?
That is correct.
Okay, that's it.
Any other questions? In the commission? I have two. Under on page five, under some paragraph F. You know that this will effectively become part of the city's infrastructure. I just want to find out, is the city intending to maintain this building? Or is this part of the homeowners association? And and the homeowners association's responsibility to maintain it?
I would like to suggest that Dan answer that, probably provide a little more clarification.
Agreed.
Okay, so to answer your question, Karen, this will be taken over by the city and maintained by the city. It's a pump station that does not provide the fire protection. But it boosts the pressure, just like what City of Manzoni currently does in our upper system. So it will become ours and us take care of it. Because it is tied to the infrastructure. We don't want to hand that over to homeowners association or an outside entity like that. So it will be solely on on us.
But the property is owned by the homeowners association? Or or do you expect to carve out a piece that belongs to the city in the middle of the subdivision?
So what I am told by conversation with Walt and Jim is the city will have an easement over the property. And so that puts us in control of the that chunk where the pump station will be located.
Okay, so I think we should add that as a condition of approval, that an easement be granted to the city. And my other question is, there's one parking space. Obviously, for the city to check and do whatever the city does with equipment. But is there adequate room for, say. Some kind of equipment repair truck that has to come from somewhere to replace a major gasket? Or whatever you whatever is in there? Is there room for both a repair truck and city staff?
If if that was needed, Karen, we would have let them park in the parking. We would just park alongside the road, just kind of like we allow for everything in in town is off street parking. The equipment in this in this building is not very big. These pumps are are less than one horsepower. So they're pretty much smaller than most of the pumps that you have that run your hot tubs and things like that. So.
Okay, thank you, Dan, I appreciate that.
Yeah.
Now, any other questions? From the commission?
If the city is taking over maintenance, the development will be putting the initial pump system in?
Yes.
And then will the city also then take over maintenance for the building?
Yeah, we'll be taking care of the building. So and actually, it's been it's kind of a benefit to us in a way for Public Works. As as Jim alluded to, the fiberglass structures, a lot of these go into fiberglass or aluminum structures. And say if you, you know, bump it, poke a hole in it, things like that. It's not as simple as replacing a shingle. Public Works has become quite adaptive to maintaining little buildings, so it's it's right up our alley.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Hearing none, is there anyone? Out in the public who would like, let me make sure I. Know what I'm saying. Anyone in favor of this proposal like to comment?
Is this open to the public, Karen?
Yes, it is.
Okay, at this time, I have no hands raised.
Okay, are there comments from the public in opposition to this proposal?
And still no hands raised.
Okay, and I heard Walt say earlier that there were no written comments.
That's correct, I didn't receive any no comments.
Okay. Jim, do you want to respond to any of the questions or comments that we made?
I think you've covered them all.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, in that case, I am going to close the public comment portion of this discussion.
Karen?
Yes?
I just had a last minute hand raised by Gerald Weiniger.
Oh, just in the nick of time, Gerald.
Just in the nick of time, so I'm gonna go ahead and unmute him and and we'll let him have his three minutes. Okay, Gerald, you should be able to unmute.
Okay, can you hear me okay?
Yep.
All right, I don't really have a question, the way you put it, Karen, you said either against or for. Not either, I just had a question about electricity and is it. Solar powered and who's paying that electricity? That's all.
Good question.
Dan, you want to answer that or you want me to?
So the way the building's constructed, it's not it's not solar. And the the pump usage, the power for that would be. The city would be taking care of that as part of the water system.
Okay. Before I finish the sentence, closing the public comment, is there any other public comment?
At this time, there are no more hands raised, Karen.
Okay. Okay, now this time, I'm really closing the public comment portion of this discussion. We'll invite discussion by members of the commission. Commission members may ask questions of the applicant, audience members or staff. But we are now at the point where the discussion is limited primarily to commission members. So I'll throw up on the floor.
Karen, can I raise my question here?
Sure.
You suggested requiring an easement be provided to the city as a condition. I'm suggesting that's probably a negotiation between the city and the private property owner. Unless the city can maintain some sort of control over this, the pump station won't be built. Pump station won't be built, development cannot occur. There's always the option to have the city requesting a partition to actually gain fee title to the property. I'm just suggesting leave that up between the city, which will be maintaining the pump station after it's built. And the developer.
Okay, I see Steve's got his hand up.
Yes, Karen, I'm wondering. Jim or Dan, this pump is going to serve phase one through four. What about the construction and state state five and onward, will this pump also serve those areas?
Yes, it will actually, in the higher. Elevations it will, but really, as we're working our way up the hill. That's the only area that is is needing higher pressure to take care of the Highlands neighborhood. The rest of it, like five, there's parts of it that it will take care of. If it's at a high enough. Elevation. A six and on or whatever is low enough that it's not required.
So you you probably will not be requiring additional water service and other developments?
That's what we're told, yes, that is what our engineers have. Looked it all over and what we are planning to do at this point. Dan and our engineers have looked at it and feel that there's probably not a need. If there is, we we will add to it, but I can't imagine we'd have to.
Okay, you say add to it, you mean the existing building we're improving or do another build?
Another one, probably.
Okay. Thank you for answering my question.
We could also add other equipment in there, but most likely have it closer to where we might need it. But. I think right now that's all all we will need.
Okay. Thank you, Jim.
You bet.
Any other questions or comments from the commission? Would someone like to propose a motion then, hearing no discussion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the application to include the easement for the. Of the modified findings.
Okay, so you're suggesting that we approve the application, adopting the findings and conditions contained in the staff report. With the addition of an easement or other agreement with the city?
Yes, that's correct.
Will that work?
I believe so.
Be granted to the city for access and maintenance, okay? Is there a second? I'll second. Okay, thanks, Jenna. It's been moved and seconded to approve the application, adopting the findings with an additional condition. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye or raise your hands if you don't have your mute going.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Okay, thank you very much, appreciate the. The thorough description of your. Proposal, thanks, Jim.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Shift my paperwork around here. So then I'm going to. Open the hearing. That was set for today and now, this is the third public hearing. In the matter of a request for approval of a planned unit development to construct a hotel complex. Hearing is open. The decision, I gotta drink some water, sorry. The decision to approve or deny this request. Will be based on the planned unit development criteria contained in ordinance 954. Section 4.136 and the special residential recreation zone, SRR, standards in section 3.030. The specific criteria are summarized in the staff report and will be reviewed at this hearing. All testimony and evidence must be directed toward this approval criteria or other criteria. In the zoning ordinance, which you believe may apply. Please note, in their decision, the planning commission may reject comments or ordinance citations that do not directly apply to the request. An issue, note that an issue which may be the basis for an appeal to Luba must be raised not later than the close of the record. Or at the following or following the final evidentiary hearing of this case. Such issues must include specific statements or evidence that allow the commission and those in attendance adequate opportunity to respond. This case will proceed like the other one with the applicant's presentation, followed by the staff report. Comments and questions in favor of the request. And finally, those opposed to the application. Commission staff and participants may direct questions to those who testified. Finally, the applicant will be entitled to a rebuttal. Generally, the applicant is entitled to 15 to 20 minutes to make the presentation. All other speakers should try to limit their comments to three minutes, avoiding repetition. If someone has already expressed your thoughts, it is perfectly all right to state that you agree with the statements of a previous speaker. If you sent a written response to the proposal, please do not repeat your comments, they are already part of the record. Prior to the conclusion of the first hearing on a land use application, a participant may request an opportunity to present additional evidence or testimony regarding the application. If such a request is made, it will be up to the commission to determine if the hearing will be continued to a date and time certain. Or if the record will be kept open for the submission of additional evidence or testimony. If the record is kept open, it will be for a minimum of seven days with a short rebuttal period thereafter afforded to the applicant. In this case, the first hearing was held on March 21st, 2022, at which time additional information was requested of the applicant regarding traffic. Wetlands and open space. We have reopened the record so that the public could be heard regarding new issues raised in the May hearing. No new issues should be raised by the public at this time, except to comment on or question new information, if any. Brought by the applicant today. And before I go on, I want to just verify with staff that that is what I just said is accurate.
Yes, Pam.
Thank you. Okay, with that out of the way, I need to ask the audience if there are any objections to the notice that was sent in this case.
And Karen, I do not have any hands raised.
Okay, are there objections to the jurisdiction of this body to hear and consider this case?
And still no hands raised.
Okay, are there any declarations of conflict or? Okay, are there any declarations of conflict or bias by any members of this body? Okay, I want to state for the record that I was approached at the farmer's market by a couple of Manzanita citizens who expressed their thoughts to me, but we did not get into an extended decision or discussion about any decisions or anyway. I imagine that some of you also may have been approached by members of the public, so I just wanted to get on the record that I have. Anyone else? Bias, conflict of interest, ex parte contact? Okay. Hearing that, I think we're ready to proceed. Oh, no, I need to ask if the public is aware of any potential or actual conflicts of interest. Please speak them now.
And Karen, I do not have any hands raised for that.
Thank you. Okay, now we're ready to go. Vito, Mrs. Sorelli, would you like to give an overview of this proposed development or your new information?
Yeah, um, yeah, thank you. Thank you for the continuation of the meeting. Just, I'll do a brief summary, just because we've had a couple meetings already, just outlining the project. But again, I'm proposing a hotel motel in the SRR zone, which is an outright use in the in the zoning ordinance. It'd be, it's comprised of a couple of unit types, so studio units at the north end, a community building that would be for resident or not residents, for guests staying at the at the site, as well as some cabins in the middle of the property with some small micro cabins at the end. At the last meeting, it was requested that I follow up with a few more additional pieces of information. One was a site map, which has been submitted. I was just going to share my screen. The site map that just had a more elaborate, I guess, detailed drawing showing the parking slips before I had the parking diagrammed, but not not with actual numbers of the spaces. So this new map that was submitted has all the numbers called out, so showing the forty-five or the forty-three spaces that are required by the the code and providing fifty-three onsite. There was also discussion last meeting about the community building. I just wanted to follow up and and note that the community building is, again, an outright use in the zoning code to have an amenity for guests staying on onsite with this hotel use. So it would be for the people staying on premise of the property. I think that's probably all the information I need to provide at this time unless there's questions. But I think most of the other information has been has been submitted. I guess as a follow-up, the the wetlands delineation before was a letter and a review and a site investigation of the findings, but that that document has since been submitted to DSL for their review. And it's a, it's in the packet, but it's the sixty-page document of the full investigation of the entire site that confirms that there is no wetland, similar to the original report that was taken of a small portion of the site, as well as the draft, I guess, submittal that was previously submitted. And this is the final document that's filed to DSL for their, you know, analysis and confirmation. But again, the the wetlands delineator did a series of test pits and and found that there is no wetlands onsite and that the soils are consistent with the majority of Manzanita. And he notes that despite, you know, the above, the well above precipitation this year, that there's no indicators of wetlands. So just wanted that to be noted as well. I think that's that's it for now, unless there's any questions.
I apologize. I keep muting because I've got my dog and I'm afraid she's going to go nuts on me. So, um, I would suggest that we hold off on questions to the applicant until we've gone through the staff report, and then we can open the floor to questions from the commission to both the applicant and staff. So would Walt, please give your report on this proposal?
Okay, thank you again. I think we're familiar with the location and their proposal here. But and also the history of how we got here. I'd just like to note, though, with this staff report that I'm going to be presenting this document effectively is a new report that incorporates all the materials. Because I think we need to look at this wholly, make sure there's no misunderstanding of what is being proposed. Where also applicable responses to submitted written comments will be incorporated here. Now, just to provide another summary on this application, it's a thirty-four unit hotel complex. There will be nineteen studio units at the north end, approximately three hundred and fifty square feet each in area, total of eleven buildings, eight designated with two units and three single units. The second component is an approximate twenty-nine hundred square foot community building of this total approximately thirteen hundred square feet will be undercover and include a kitchen and food area. The outdoor patio includes fire pit. Building is located directly south of the nineteen hotel units. For the record, no misunderstanding here again, this building will not contain a restaurant. South of the community building are nine additional rental units. These are one and two-story structures, each containing about a thousand square feet. South end of the side are six single-story cabins identified as micro cabins. These are A-frame in design and surround a shared open space. The side plan, again, through the modification, now includes not forty-three but fifty-three parking spaces. There are twelve near the nineteen-unit hotel, eight next to the community building, twelve opposite the nine large cabins, and two spaces, each a dish, two spaces for each adjacent to seven of the nine cabins and seven spaces adjacent to the mini cabins. There's now also the revised side plan includes nearly fifteen thousand square feet of open space. And finally, the private roadway will run along the east side of the site, serving the entire property, and required public facilities will also be located within the roadway. Section three dot zero three zero append two H permits hotels, motels, including eating and drinking establishments therewith in the special residential recreation zone. The hotel complex is therefore in allowed use in this zone. In addition, subsection four C requires the commission to use the planned unit development procedures in section four point one three six when looking at evaluation of this project. Now, we are looking at a planned unit development layout, specifically building and open space locations, roadway and parking improvements. The application does not include a design review for any of the structures. While section four point one five zero requires a design review for all new construction for commercial industrial uses, this requirement is limited only to the C-one, LC, and R-four zones. Design review does not apply to the SR bar zone. Regardless, the commission has the authority to condition their decision on the final layout substantially conforming to the proposal, including relative size and so forth. Now, under the planned unit development provisions, these are found in section four point one three six. And again, they apply to this particular project. Excuse me again. Sub item one reviews the purpose of the proposal, generally to grant greater flexibility to the develop to the developer. This is not directly applicable to this request. Normally, we're looking at residential development, but this is the process that applies here. While it's a requirement, it's not necessary to achieve the project's objective. Under sub item two, a planned development may include uses and conditional uses permitted in the underlying zone. B, the developer may aggregate the dwellings to create a cluster development, and bonding may be required as well. In compliance with the first item, proposal would establish a thirty-four unit hotel. Again, this is allowed in the zone. There are no dwellings here, so that clustering is not an issue, and bonding can always be placed as an option. The next, I'm under section four point one three six dot three. First item is that applicant must submit ten copies. This was done. Two, prior to discussion of the public hearing, the manager submits these to the planning commission, which has occurred. The planning commission, under item three, then considers preliminary development plan at a meeting and can review the plan with conformance to the code. Now, under item A, there are special fiscal conditions or objectives of development which the proposal will satisfy to warrant a departure from standards. And again, there is a steep slope on the east side of this project. However, the layout, as will be reviewed later, complies with all the setback and height limitations of the code. And the applicant did not request any departure from any standard or didn't identify any. Under item B, the development will not be inconsistent with comprehensive plan provisions or zoning objectives of the area. Excuse me. Failure of the city to comply with the city's con plan was noted by a number of area property owners. Concerns included the project would reduce livability, was not harmonious, and generally incompatible. I think it's important at this time to recognize the relationship between the con plan and the development ordinance. Your plan provides broad-based goals and policies that guide the city's direction, while the development ordinance implements those plans by establishing rules and regulations governing development on a day-to-day basis. This relationship is enforced in state law under one ninety-seven dot one nine five per N one. And I will not read the entire section, but it simply notes that for a limited land use application, anything that you had in the comprehensive plan that you felt was important to judge a project, that must be incorporated within your development code. Cities had, within two years of September twenty-ninth, nineteen ninety-one, to incorporate all those changes. As such, if a county does not incorporate its planned provisions in into its land use regulations, the planned provisions may not be used as a basis for the decision by the city or county on an on an appeal on that decision. So in effect, while our code talks about comprehensive plan policies, the city may not refer back to those policies in looking at this particular project. Now, in fact, goals and policies relate to such issues as livability were required to be incorporated into our code. After the above noted date, the city cannot rely on the plan again. In this case, the ordinance, which adopted also the zone map, established the SRR zone, the zone which permits residential uses along with compatible commercial activities. And among these very limited commercial uses is a hotel, which is the subject of this application. So again, this is a permitted use, and I'd also like to add one other thing. I did use the term limited land use decision. I'd like to note per ORS one nine seven dot oh one five per N twelve, per N A, per N B, a limited land use decision includes a final decision or determination made by a local government pertaining to a site within an urban growth boundary that concerns the approval or denial of an application based on discretionary standards designed to regulate the fiscal characteristic characteristics of a use permitted outright, including but not limited to site review and design review. The, this is a limited line use application by state law, and by state law, I understand the feeling on it, but the comprehensive plan policies cannot be incorporated as part of the decision criteria. Under per N C, the area around the development can be planned to be in substantial harmony with the proposed layout or a plan. The single-family residential development is primary development in the activity in the vicinity. There's also a golf course on the west side. The site topography basically places most of the structures below residential uses to the east, which should limit some visual impacts. The golf course tree canopy to the west provides additional separation and screening. And the hotel provides a development form that is in substantial harmony with respect to its massing and its design. SRR zone also specifically lists hotels as a permitted use. I'd like to go a little bit further, talk about hotels. Hotels are defined in ORS six six nine dot zero zero five. Hotels meeting this definition are required to meet specific health and safety requirements. City contacted Tillamook County Environmental Health Manager Jamie Craig to provide clarification on the requirements of a hotel. The county submitted comments, which are included as part of the record of this case. There's a long list of requirements. Again, see, you see the attachment, which pertain to the establishment and operation of a hotel. No such requirements apply to any short-term rental or uses. Consistent with planned development provisions is entirely appropriate for the commission to condition and approval, requiring the use meet the definition of a hotel per ORS six six nine, and that the applicant show compliance and continual compliance with all necessary health and safety provisions of state, county, and local regulations. Under per N D, this plan can be completed in a reasonable amount of time. There is no guidelines in place on how this is determined. I believe, and I'm suggesting as a condition, the applicant be allowed up to two years to submit materials to look at, say, the initial or the whole project. And the applicant will have up to five years to submit the remaining details of the project. Let me sort of clarify that a bit. If this is development developed in phases, the applicant has two years to submit the initial phase. If there's anything left over, that has to be submitted within five years. Also, please note that at the submittal of this material, we would return to the planning commission. The planning commission would look at the building plans, the layout, the landscaping, the parking, and sort of rudimentary public facility matters to make sure that the project is consistent with whatever was approved by the planning commission. Under item D, it talks about streets are adequate to support. And again, we previously reviewed two comments, both from traffic engineers with regard to improvements that need to be made. And they're very limited to some striping and also removal of some vegetative material. And again, both of these, the applicant submitted the initial traffic report. We had our traffic engineer look at the second one, or review it and also submit comments. Neither ordinance ninety-five dash four or ninety-five dash five, which is land divisions, contains minimum driveway width and requirements. Staff feels that the, a, at least a twenty-two-foot improvement would be acceptable unless otherwise modified, and the actual type of construction be left to the Department of Public Works. Staff recognizes that there are issues with regard, potential issues during the summer months with pedestrian traffic, bicycle traffic, et cetera. Projects can be conditioned by making improvements that are commensurate, commensurate, commence, never mind, tie in with a potential impact. And those improvements tie to an adopted system plan. In some cases, a portion of the improvements have paid In some cases, a portion of the improvements have paid through system development charges. And it's important to note neither traffic engineer identified the need for improvements other than those at the intersection. Think requesting the developer to improve roadways and sidewalks outside of the development and making downtown connections is not commensurate with the impact of this particular project. Further, the city lacks a transportation improvement plan, which would guide the location of these improvements. These comments, please understand, I'm not trying to diminish stated concerns just to recognize the limitations on what the city can require of the developer in regarding to off-site improvements. Finally, under item F, proposed utility and tranche facilities are adequate for the population densities. The applicant did submit a site range plan for the entire project. An initial examination by staff indicates the improvements can comply with public work standards. And these can again be verified when engineering plans are submitted. Getting to item four, the commission will notify the applicant of their decision. Again, this is a procedural issue. Item five, following the preliminary meeting, the applicant may proceed with a request for approval of the plan development. This appears to be a provision to identify the site under its own map as a planned development. In effect, this requires an approved tentative plan to be submitted, reviewed, and approved, which is the purpose of the current hearing. However, as previously noted, it's also appropriate, consistent with this provision, to require the applicant to return to the planning commission with plans that show detail terms of landscaping, parking, parking improvements, building design, et cetera. And this was placed as a recommended condition of approval. Under item six, in addition to the requirements section, the commission may attach conditions. Note, this is obviously ultimately your decision. Conditions, recommended conditions are attached. Also, an approved plan development will be identified on the zone map. Again, that is something the city is required to do. Item A, building permits in a planned development will only be issued on the basis of an approved plan. Again, design review is not part of this application, nor is required in the zone. However, the submitted material does identify location of various units, their general design, open space areas, et cetera. And so therefore appropriate to condition the decision. Make sure that the proposal, what is actually built, conforms to this current proposal. That basically covers the plan development portion of it. The remaining part has to do with compliance with specific S R R zone standards. These standards are found in section three dot zero, three zero per N four of the zoning ordinance. Under four A, it limits density. I'll note again, this is not a residential development. This provision does not apply. Under four B, it references the R three zone for, except for density for standards such as lot size, et cetera. And again, these would apply to the case. I'm going to review that a little bit further on in the report. But at this juncture, I will note that based on the analysis, the proposal complies with that criterion. Item four C, this requires a planned development, which we are currently reviewing or just reviewed. Under four D, the minimum lot coverage is maximum lot coverage is forty percent. The applicant provides sufficient information that it will likely not exceed thirty-three percent. And finally, under four E, in areas without a high water table, dry well capable of support absorbing storm runoff shall be provided. Again, the applicant submitted a detailed plan for the public works to review. The initial reviews that it can comply. And again, if approved, engineering plans will need to be submitted. In a similar vein, there was discussion on existing wetlands on the property. I'll just simply reiterate what the applicant said in the new proposal. The application, the application has been submitted to DSL. It is now up to the state to review it, but the applicant, the professional involved in the delineation determine there are no wetlands on the property. Again, it's up to the DSL to make that call. And right of me, this just goes over the development standards for the zone. And again, the lot, the property certainly exceeds the five thousand minimum square foot lot size. It meets, it exceeds the forty feet of frontage requirement. It exceeds the lot depth of ninety feet. In this case, it's eleven hundred feet. It exceeds all setback requirements within the code for the R three zone. I'll just walk through this. Finally, building higher the structures. Initial look, they do not exceed the twenty-eight-foot limitation. But again, this can be reviewed through the building permit process. The greatly exceeds the ten-foot rear yard setback. There is a coverage limitation fifty-five seat in the R three, fifty-five percent in the R three zone. This is done at thirty-three percent, which covers that. And again, with the issue of the high water table, this is noted in the R three zone. The applicant submitted additional information of addressing that. Moving on, the plane unit development section has no provisions whatsoever on parking. Generally, what we look at is parking per each use. And in this case, the use most like, more often than not, the uses for a single-family home. Looking at the standards though, within the code for the hotel, going through that, staff estimated a minimum of thirty-four point two five spaces would be required. And if some of the units had extra bedrooms, it would be thirty-nine units. And again, the proposal includes fifty-three, which exceeds that. With that, I appreciate everyone's patience. I just want to make sure that we cover the bases here and got into the record. But it is certainly staff's recommendation that this proposal meets or exceeds the standards and recommends approval subject to the conditions at the end of the staff report.
Okay, thank you. Let me open the floor to members of the commission to direct questions to the applicant or to staff.
Aaron?
Yeah, please.
For Walter. Comment to Wal, both on page thirteen and page fourteen, that forty-three parking spaces snuck back in. On page thirteen, it's item F about, oh, halfway down on the hotel requirements. You're muted, Walt.
Lee, I, I coughed out when I reviewed it, and thank you again. And it's forty-three, yes.
Both on page fifteen.
Yes.
You caught it there too?
Yes, indeed.
Thank you.
Yes.
So, just to clarify, that wherever it references forty-three parking spaces, we should say fifty-three.
Right, and that was only in two areas.
Okay.
And Lee correctly identified them.
Just for the record, I did too. I just. Jenna, you, you had your hand up.
I have another easy one. The hotel, we keep saying it's nineteen units. If I look at the drawings of the hotel, it's twenty. So I just wanted to get an accurate count of, in total, it would be actually thirty-five units.
What I saw on the submitted material, it was nineteen. We've been working with that from the get-go. Vito may wish to clarify that, but right from the start, it was.
It's nineteen, correct.
Vito, on your plans, it has labeled twenty hotel units. From, I'm just opening my several documents from, I think the May meeting when you submitted.
That might have been a typo, but it's definitely been nineteen from the, the initial narrative in every staff report, so that might be a typo.
I've, I've seen that. Okay, but when I also count them, it's, it's twenty. And I, I guess it, it should be easy because the hotel is all two-story units, so, and even number.
There's probably just, it's probably just dealing with the slope there. There's, there's, at the initial part of the site, it's on the, where it drops down to an even grade. So there's probably some structure underneath one of the units that maybe is appearing to look like twenty to you, but it's, it's definitely been nineteen and is nineteen on the application. And it would not be twenty.
Okay, well, I.
It might be just the substructure of one of the units to, to help support on the hillside, but.
Yep, and I see that, I see the first and second one. But it, it shows units labeled in the design, units one through twenty, so there's a third unit in here that shouldn't be here, and I'm just wondering which one it is.
I'll make sure that's corrected, but it will be, it will be nineteen if there's a, I, I can't find the exact document you're looking at, but I'm happy to make any correction and, and go back to the original application of nineteen.
Are, are we, when we talk about, I, I just want to clarify, you talk about the hotel, and then you talk about the mini cabins, and then what are the things in the middle?
There, I mean, they're all, this is all hotels, so the whole, the whole project is a hotel. And I think the term, it would be a studio units at the, at the north end. And then there's cabins in the middle, and then what I'm calling micro cabins at the end. But just to be clear, the entire project is a hotel complex. And it just, I guess, you know, verbiage that could be, I could change the names of how I'm labeling these, but this is to delineate the nineteen studios, the, the nine cabins, and then the six micro cabins at the end.
Okay, so it's nineteen studios.
Yes.
And how many cabins?
The nine. And then six. With the community building in between.
Okay, any other questions from the commission? Phil.
Question for Vito. You show a drainage plan. And I was curious as to how you plan to keep debris from getting into those fifty-five gallon drums that you've got.
Those are buried under the ground. It's similar to other, other drainage systems used in the city of Manzanita with a lot of applications and you know, maybe Dan or, or Scott could speak to that, but it's, it's a typical code drainage system established by the city of Manzanita. So there, they would not be able to collect debris. And a lot of the gutters and downspouts that feed the water to those systems have a catchment system that diverts debris prior to entering them.
Phil, are you going to have to have maintenance on that on a continual basis in order for that system to operate okay?
Typically, no, typically not. I mean, I, it's rare to find the need for maintenance on this type of system.
And Phil, just to clarify what Vito was saying. Prior to the barrels, there is a sediment basin that's required to collect any debris prior to it getting into the barrels.
Yeah, I, I saw that. What I'm worried about is the debris is going to build up in there, and then the water isn't going to pass through. In which case, then it's just going to flood out onto the ground.
So that is what the sediment basin is for prior to the barrels.
Okay.
Any other questions? I, I actually have a question for staff. What is? Th- this is my concern. What we're calling the studios and the mini cabins are probably, I'm just guessing, similar to what a normal hotel or motel might look like. Small rooms intended for a couple people with minimal amenities as far as food preparation and that kind of stuff. The nine cabins, to me, still look like they could be considered dwellings under the plain language of our code. And I'm wondering what, if you've calculated what the density is for the entire project. And is it, does it meet the six point five units per gross acre? Assuming that, I, I mean, what we're really looking at are short-term rental dwelling units that are part of a larger development.
No, I did not calculate the density because I accepted this and based on the information provided by the applicant, information by Tillman County, et cetera, that this is and will be operated as a hotel. So the density does not apply in this case. If this were residential units, we'd have a much different discussion. But no, I did not, and while they may look like a certain type of dwelling, if you will, it still is an operator plan to be as a, as a hotel operation. So, no, I did not look at that, and that was now germane to the requirements for the hotel.
Okay, Bert, you have your hand up?
You're on mute, Bert.
I think you're muted, Bert.
Eric, is that better?
Yep, I can hear you now.
In the staff report, there was, it was stated that there is fifteen thousand, approximately fifteen thousand square feet of open space in this development. And one of the questions I have is, does that fifteen thousand square feet include the footprint of the community building?
I'm searching my memory here, and no, it does not.
So that is, the fifteen thousand square feet is truly open.
Open space.
I can't cite the actual part of the planned development section in ninety-five dash four. But there is a place there where they require that the uses, how the open space will be used, will be given in the, in the application by the developer. I don't, and I don't believe that has been, that I don't think that has been done in the application.
Actually, I, I believe the applicant did submit information on that, and that, that was part of his presentation. You know, open spaces, open spaces, it's an open area. Not necessarily has to be used for anything in particular, and so.
But the requirement of the application is that it uses be given in the, in the application.
I'm not sure how to respond. It shows, you know, it just simply talks about open space. It does not work on, ask for particular uses or activities within that open space. within that open space. In fact, the issue is not so much open space, it's maximum lot coverage. And in this case, maximum lot coverage would be allowed is forty percent, and he's approaching thirty-three percent. So, so conversely, he certainly meets that requirement. I'm not too sure what you're referring to. I'm trying to.
Okay. I will go offline here and pull out the actual paragraph in the planned development provisions.
And I do want to note that last, not last meeting, but the meeting previously, it was requested that there was a a site plan modified to show what areas were classified as as the outdoor common space because to basically you know, note that it's not just the site area like the hill slope to the east that would not be usable. And that's where I highlighted the areas for the staff and planning commission to show and clearly delineate which areas would be these common gathering locations shown on this plan that was submitted at the previous, at the last meeting. So this area around the common area as well as like the gathering space of the micro cabins, and then I noted all the common gathering space at each hotel cabin. I think there's discussion, yeah.
Well, Bert's looking that citation up. Did you have something you wanted to add, Walt, or?
Well, actually, I did find the so citation, and and Vito can probably clarify some of this. But under four point one three six, which is the PUD section, and under perim under subsection three goes under a planned development procedure under item A four, it says proposed open space uses. Open space, it doesn't say a particular use, open space can be used as simply that, open space. There's no real guidance in the planned development section. I understand what Bert's getting at now, but there's no specific requirement, standard, or level of improvement. Open space can simply be that, open space. So the applicant did submit the material for the planning commission meeting this evening for the for the square footage that is involved. And again, that doesn't include the, if I recall, does not include the slope area. So this is areas that are open to those who are staying overnight.
So the the answer then is this open space is used as open space?
Correct.
Okay, it's not, it's not useful for gathering or.
But is. I mean, it is used for, it's used for gathering. It's right around the common building. It's a gathering space, whether it's for lawn games, for for guests to congregate. It's it's right around the common building and at the end of the micro cabin. So it's not just open, I guess, landscaping, it's an area, it's common area for the property. The actual specific games and and activities have not.
So, so it's not, so it would not be used for landscaping, for plant material?
It's a combination of both. I mean, in theory, it would be like a a small park on the property for guests. If if that's the easiest term to put it in perspective, it would be a small gathering space. And small meaning, you know, these areas are over five thousand square feet. So a typical a typical building lot in Manzanita is around five thousand square feet, and that's how much space I'm providing in the one section next to next to the common area right here is five thousand square feet, and then another area down here at the bottom, which is another fifty-five hundred square feet. So almost two full lots of gathering, not accounting all the other additional spaces that would be used for.
A large section of that green space is a narrow strip in front of the.
I'm sorry, I wasn't counting. The five thousand is just this section right here, not counting the sections in front of the.
It's just where the where the dots are in the green, or?
I'm, I don't know exactly what you're referring to.
Okay.
But yeah, this section right here that my cursor's going around is is just for reference, like a five, like the size of a tax lot of outdoor space, just this one section alone.
And there are other sections like that.
The entire space that's highlighted right now in this drawing would be common gathering space that I see as a community gathering space.
Okay, so is it is it identified in the plan as gathering space?
Yes, common area is what it's classified as.
It's called a common area.
Yeah, common gathering. I'm not, I'm not sure what your question is.
I I like this, there's a section in the application where it says what the uses of the open space will be.
It's a common gathering space for guests, whether it's around the common area for whether it's for lawn games, for, you know, a picnic outside, it's it's outdoor green space that is, you know, flat in nature for guests to use.
Okay, so it will not be filled with landscape vegetation of bushes and such that would prevent people from doing that activity?
No, correct.
Okay, so in your application, can you write that it will be an open space for community gathering? So that it restricts it from other uses that might be put there? That would prevent the community gathering?
Yes, I can, I mean, that's the full intent, so I'm happy to work on the language to make it more clear, but that's the.
Okay, that's, I guess, I guess that's all I'm asking. That would be great. Thanks.
Okay, I see John has a has a hand up. You want to unmute yourself?
Yeah. The staff report refers to the motel requirements for the state of Oregon. I read through that long list of items, and it mentioned in there that laundry facilities have to be inspected on the site. So the question to the applicant is, are you going to have laundry facilities onsite, and if so, where?
There would either be laundry facilities underneath some of the, one of the units on the north end or off-site laundry services depending on on the use and and but but most likely on onsite, and it would be inspected similar to other hotels in town.
Okay, where would you locate those?
Right here, where my cursor is.
Oh, all right. Is that one of the, what was going to be one of the motel units?
No, it would be at the bottom floor. That's where it's into the hillside. So no, it would not be taken away a room.
Um, just to clarify, so of the eleven buildings that you show for stu- of for nineteen studios, part of one of those will be a laundry facility?
Correct.
Okay.
Unless, unless it's needed to go offsite due to you know, constraints, like a lot of hotels go back and forth, whether it's onsite or offsite, depending on use.
Okay. Lee, go ahead.
Thank you, Karen.
Vito.
Hey, Lee.
Will these proposed onsite structures be designed and constructed to the requirements of the state or state of Oregon Residential Specialty Code? Or to the Oregon Structural Specialty Code?
It would be to the requirements of a commercial hotel use.
So it would be to the Oregon Structural Specialty Code?
Correct.
And that helps me take the equation of a single family who's out of it. That helps me. Thank you. Karen asked us to kind of remain focused, excuse me, on on things that were in ninety-five four, and I'm going to stray off here just a tiny bit. But Vito, this is to your benefit. I just want you to be aware that there may be a something may come up that requires you to change some of your design here. And I'm going to ask you a few questions first. It appears that the roadway access to the development is over eight hundred feet in length. Does that sound right?
Um, I have to measure it, but I'll listen to you for now, yeah.
Okay, and it's been stated in the staff report that twenty-two foot width or uh, per the city of Manzanita Public Works Department would be, would be adequate. Are there any fire hydrants planned for that roadway? Do you know?
Um, the full engineering of and working with the city public works would would need to be finalized to see if there was fire hydrants on that. It would be, I guess, a private driveway. If, are you going, are you classifying the road or the private driveway?
Well, throughout the staff report, it's referred to as roadway.
Okay, so the the roadway on onsite, we'll call it. If we need a fire hydrant, it would be placed, and all buildings will be sprinkled.
Okay, so now we're getting to the crux of my concern for you here. I didn't see anywhere where the fire, the fire district looked at this, did they?
We had two or three pre-app application meetings with the fire department and and I don't know if there's any letters that have been submitted. I think there are with, Scott might have those on record, but we've met with the fire department numerous times and and stated if the adequate turn radius at the end, and due to the unit count being sprinkled, we would be okay with the one point of ingress and egress to the site.
Okay, so again, I'm gonna, I'm gonna complete this here just with a couple more sentences. That the two thousand nineteen, which is the current edition of the Oregon Fire Code, Appendix D. And it kind of mirrors the language in the Tillamook County fire board. And that is that when you get roads, access roads, the length that yours appears to be, that the minimum width of the road is twenty-six feet. And that the size of the hammerhead at the end may be larger, may be required to be larger than what you have. So again, I am not, we we don't make fire district decisions, and I'm certainly not trying to imply that what's going to happen is, I'm I'm not, I'm not greasing the skids here. I'm just letting you know that it's something that you may want to be aware of.
Yeah, and everything will be engineered and and to code, and obviously, we'll go through the agency reviews as a follow-up, not to just the pre-app. And then the reviews of both a public right-of-way, whether it's twenty-six, or the classifications of the private drive aisle. I need to verify both with the engineers and the fire department to make sure what those requirements are.
Okay.
For final, but it, they will be met.
Well, I'm sure they will, but I wanted you to be aware that there may be a kerfuffle here. Thank, thank you for answering my questions.
Yeah, thank you.
Can I piggyback on Lee for a second?
Please.
With the fire code. It also with the road access. Um, it says if the access road is is more than four hundred feet, that a tur- turnout will be required, a ten by thirty-foot turnout will be required, and that they can't be more than four hundred feet apart. So depending on if it's more or less than eight hundred, there could be some potential changes there.
The fire codes are very specific and and would, you know, obviously be reviewed by the local jurisdiction. That's who who gives the final review and and authority. I've, I have reviewed this plan a number of times with Tillamook County Fire Department, and the plan to date that's been presented has has been accepted in its preliminary state. It will need final engineering, but in its current state, it has been reviewed and given a sign-off of its of its layout. I'm not sure the specific codes that you're referring to. I'd have to dig into it on the four hundred with the ten by thirty, et cetera, but this plan has been reviewed and and approved to date.
Um, just, just to clarify, Vito, you just said the Tillamook County Fire.
I meant to say the Haylen Bay.
Thank you, okay.
Can I place on the record that the fire chief is aware of this meeting, but it's also a federal holiday. He would have liked to have joined. But is not here.
Yep, on the record.
And Walt and just, I mean, Walt and and Scott and Dan, it was a pre-app meeting with with all agencies that were all, you know, reviewing these initial pre-applications, so.
I would concur with that. Would also like to add that condition number fifteen requires compliance with not only the development ordinance, but also requirements of the bay, the Haylen Bay wastewater, the Haylen Bay Fire, Tillamook County Environmental Health, Department of State Lands and applicable building code requirements. So you can capture everything, but there he is obligated to comply with those requirements. And fail, failure to comply means the development cannot proceed.
Walt, can I ask for clarification on the, where that's located in your staff report?
That is condition number fifteen. It'll be at the bottom of page, no, excuse me. Condition I at the bottom of page fifteen, top is sixteen.
Ah, okay.
Okay.
So, yeah, okay, I'll I'll deal with my concern later, but thank you.
Anybody else?
I looking at the open spaces, I still have concern with public safety and the golf course. I I feel like there needs to be a plan in place to protect people that will be using those common spaces. Has there been discussion with with the golf course?
No, and I don't know if the golf course has, I mean, I've not talked to the golf course, but I think, you know, reviewing the site and the topography, the land, and the amount of tree vegetation, this is all the hatched areas with tree buffer. So even though the site feels like it's close and abutting the the golf course, which it is, there's still a lot of distance between the actual built structures and the edge of the tree buffer. So this is like the shaded area represents the the trees, the current trees onsite. Um, so all means and methods of the design are to, you know, protect as well as keeping the vegetation onsite and again, showing more trees and plant planting to to provide that buffer.
Um, so the a lot of the trees on your side will, like especially in front of the common area, it is, it is not treated, and you don't have a lot of room there to plant your own trees. I just, as as a golfer that plays Manzanita a lot and has worked at Manzanita Links Golf Course, I'm, I'm very concerned about about the public safety and that are nets going to be in place? Are there warning signs? Are you know, if there isn't vegetation buildup, especially in front of that common area for other places, it's easy access to the golf course? Is there going to be a fence up? Is there, you know, I I think something it needs to be a part of the plan.
Um, I think, I mean, I want this, I I would hope not nets, and I would hope not fencing. I would like, I mean, there's a lot of vegetation that I think buffers the 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 buildings themselves. Back where you're talking about the common area, this would be almost like a ninety-degree angle to the common space, but I would like to, this to blend into the natural landscape in as much as possible to avoid, you know, nets and and fencing and and really let the vegetation act as a buffer. Um, and it is a liability that, and item that, you know, I will take note of, and similar to any residence or hotel development or property development on any golf course in the state. I think it's always a, you know, a concern and part of, you know, living along a golf course. So it all, all means and methods, and I mean, I share the same concerns as you, and I'll put all effort forth to to protect, you know, both both sides of this property as well as the golf course.
So I I just want to piggyback and clarify, the the line of the green that you're showing, there's a big, long line of green, the west edge of that is the property boundary, is that correct?
Correct, yes.
And the common area is also, that's a property line?
Right, here's the. Right, here's the property line.
Now, I'm talking about near the mini cabins.
Um, I'm not sure where you're looking, but this is the property line right here.
Um, I'm looking at the mini cabins. And there's a wedge-shaped common area.
This is the property line here.
Um, look further to the south. You've got six little tiny micro cabins, mini cabins, whatever you're calling them, and there's a wedge-shaped common area with three trees in the middle of it.
This is just, there's, I don't, I don't know if you've been down or like if you're looking from the road, this is kind of the edge of the bank where then it climbs back up to the property on top of, call it hole, like the tee-off on hole five. So the elevation change from this common area up to where my cursor is now is maybe, you know, a hundred feet. So that's where it climbs back up the hillside. So the common area that I've shown here is kind of a representation of where that change of topography happens.
Okay, so I'm looking at, there's a dotted line right through the middle of the common area that you just showed. Is that, uh, is that the property line?
No, property line is right here, right here, down here where my, this line right here that's highlighted.
Okay, and so your intention is to leave whatever tree cover is available in that area?
All the trees that are shaded here are meant to be, correct, yes, native trees.
Okay.
Yes.
Across the rest of the property to the north, your intention is that the golf course trees provide its own screen?
And I like, I mean, all, all those trees are off property, so those trees would be kept and preserved and not harmed by the development. And then any trees on property will be, you know, kept or best effort to keep and then after will be vegetated heavier along this, call it west, west face. The goal, the goal is to have this site fully, you know, fully landscaped, so it is complete buffer. I think on the first and second meeting, I both referenced like how Coast cabins is, is, is almost non-existent when you're driving on Lenida because of the greenscape surrounding it. So the goal is to have a lot of greenscape along the east, on the north, and then using a lot of the vegetation, the natural vegetation, the golf course, the tree buffer here, and then adding to it to really filter this, this um, this plan into, into the landscape. And that's why the, the design has been segmented into these parts to really let it um, have the landscaping and the built structures blend and be cohesive with one another.
So if, um, a wind, let me just follow up, Jenna, if a windstorm knocks down every tree on the golf course, there would be no screening. Is that correct? You're relying entirely on the golf course?
No, all plant, all plant screen. And if there was an, you know, a tornado or another, you know, hurricane item that came through Manzanita, then there would have to be the idea of revegetation, but I mean, that's, I hope, I hope that doesn't happen because I do like the natural buffer that that provides.
Okay, go ahead and finish your question, Jenna.
And then the same, like I, I, I like the aesthetic of blending in the natural habitat, the, but I think that also encourages people to venture out off the property. Um, and again, I, I think it's, it's a, it's a safety issue with the number of falls. I think you'll be surprised with the number of falls that you see in that ravine.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't know how to answer that. I, I would like the, like I was saying, I like the natural landscaping to be, act as that buffer. I don't like, I would, would prefer not to have a hardline fence um separating those two. I think it, it takes away from the aesthetics and blending into this natural site. Um, I, I see the concerns. I, you know, there's a lot of houses on the City of Manzanita's golf course that have similar natural, you know, vegetation, whether you're on hole six or wrapping back the corner. A lot of houses are built along the golf course and there's a lot of, you know, every single golf course in the state of Oregon pretty much has, has properties along it. It's something that, you know, each, each, you know, development deals with.
Um, yeah, yes, I agree.
I don't know what to, to follow up with.
Okay. Um, Steve, you have a hand up?
I do. I have a, hey, Vito, I want to thank you for your statement. You want to keep as many of the vegetation, the tall trees as possible. I think that's very important for the neighborhood. I, I'm just gonna say this, I'd be remiss if I didn't bring it up. Um, I kind of feel handicapped because we're not able to talk about how it's operated and some, what may happen once it's built. I'm very concerned about being good neighbors, Vito, to where it's gonna be down there and the environment. It, to me, it speaks to being substantial harmony with existing environment. Uh, it's very important. So how are we going to harmonize this with the, with the neighborhood? Cause you've seen all the letters, you've, you've felt all the emotions. So how are we going to work through all this?
I mean, I, I feel like I have just the same concerns. I mean, I want to be a good neighbor and I want this property to be successful for the people staying on site as well as the neighbors. Um, there is gonna be management to properly, you know, take care of the property and assist with any means and methods that, that, that need attention. Um, but um, outside of that, I, I have the same cons- concerns and also the same aspirations to be, you know, blended into the neighborhood and, and whether keeping people safe on site on this property, keeping, you know, noise down for guests staying on site and their neighbors on site as well as the, the people living across on Dorcas Lane and the, in the series of, you know, quadplexes and duplexes and triplexes as well as the, you know, the cabins, the Classic Street Cabin to the east. So I mean, I have the same goals and intent of a lot of those letters. I respect all the letters that came in, but I have the same goals in mind.
Yeah, well, I, I really had one to say that because it's very important to me because I live here too, like everybody else who wrote those letters. I walk down Classic frequently. I'm familiar with Dorcas and in my mind's eye, I'm trying to see how are you gonna get this harmony and I'm struggling with that myself. Uh, and so I want you to know that uh the people here got passion, my friend, so.
No, I, and I understand. I mean, I, I, I grew up in a small town in Arch Cape. I mean, I understand the small community feeling. I, the whole intent and the, the idea of this layout is to, you know, really filter it into the landscape, divide it up into nice segments that have a lot of landscaping and, and really buffer it and have a nice vegetation. I think you know, it, it will take time to mature, but I think, you know, Coast cabins and there's a lot of other residential developments in Manzanita have done a very successful job of, of, of blending and, and keeping within character of, of the coastal environment.
Well, it's a very beautiful area. Uh, like I said, I go down there quite frequently and uh, it's, um, I just want you to be aware how, how important that is to all of us over there. And um, I think it has potential, great potential. And I just want to, want to keep that harmony and keep that, that uh stability in our community.
No, I appreciate that.
Any other questions from the commission? Uh, Bert, you, you have your hand up again?
Yes, I have one comment, Karen, about, on this subject that Steve brought up. Um, it's unfortunate, but the planning commission can't do much to have any effect on how the property is operated after we approve it. And uh, I think this has come up before in other situations in Manzanita. It's going to be up to the city to make a serious commitment to, to make sure that the hotel operates in a way that it does not be a problem for the neighbors. And how, how they're going to go about doing that, I don't know. But they're going to have to pay attention and have facilities and, uh, facilities for the neighbors to report things to the city for them to take care of. So uh, there's not, my understanding is there's little or nothing we can do along those lines. And it's going to be up to the City of Manzanita to take care of it as the development takes place. That's all.
Thank you. Any others? Okay, I, what I'd like to do is propose maybe a five, five-minute break, seven-minute break, just to refill your water glass and then we'll move forward to um, uh, public testimony from the public. Is, any objections to that plan?
Nope.
Should we say five minutes? Is that enough? So it's five.
How about seven minutes?
Seven minutes? So that would.
Yeah, I'm up to seven. I've got a dog that needs to get out.
Yeah, it's, what, what time? Seven minutes from now? Five oh five?
Well, I have six oh five.
Six oh five, thank you.
Okay.
All right, we'll be um, in, just take a quick break, be right back. Still waiting for a couple of people to rejoin us. Then we'll get going again. It looks like we're still missing Walt. Is there anybody else critical to this meeting that needs to be here? Ah, there he is. Okay. Now that we've reconvened, I would like to open the floor to any persons in the audience who wish to speak in favor of the proposed development.
Okay, Karen, I had two, two hands up for a while and I don't know if they're in favor or opposed to. Gerald, if you're in favor, keep your hand up, otherwise I'm gonna unmute you here. And go ahead and, and you should be able to unmute Gerald.
No, again, I have a in-the-middle question.
Okay.
Could you please tell us how many people are online right now? Because, you know, as a participant, we cannot see how many people are here.
Right now, Gerald, I've got forty-eight attendees and seventeen panelists.
Thank you very much. Bye.
Okay, next I'm gonna unmute Carol Kennedy if you have a comment in favor of. And you should be able to unmute yourself.
Okay, okay, here I am.
There you go.
Um, my, I'm like Gerald in the neutral range at this point. But I, I'm concerned about what cooking facilities would be available within each of the three different types of units. And I would like Vito to respond to that.
Um, be, before you do, Vito, I just wanna clarify whether this question should be asked since it doesn't technically involve the ordinance or whether it's testimony we should hear and then determine. Do we have an opinion on that?
There is. The bottom line is that the units need to comply with the hotel requirements that are established by the state and enforced by Tillamook County. So whether there are units and cooking units in there or kitchen units in there or not will be, you know, a developer option, but they need to conform to the specific requirements of state law and also be certified by Tillamook County. So whether there or not is really not germane.
Okay. So I, I don't understand quite what that means.
Whether they have cooking units or not is not germane to the land use case of the establishment of the hotel as a project.
Oh, okay. Okay, well, I'm, I'm just interested in how people are going to prepare food. There's no restaurant on site. The restaurants that are in the area are quite a distance away. So what you're looking at is people perhaps even bringing their own cooking facilities like propane stoves, barbecues, their own individual hot plates. Unless there's clear cooking facilities within each unit. I'm just wondering, I know Vito has a project up in Arch Cape and are there any cooking facilities in the studios or in the cabins? Is there a microwave? I mean, that, that to me seems pretty basic.
You're, there you go.
Yeah, I'm not too sure. Karen, if Vito wants to answer that, he is welcome to. I just want to advise the planning commission whether the there or not is not central to the land use case. That's all.
Okay. Vito, would you like to respond to that?
There would, there would be, as Walt mentioned, per code amenities for, for guests in the unit similar to my Arch Cape property.
Okay, thank you.
Not having, you know, not having barbecues and third-party items brought to site.
Okay, any other persons in the audience who wish to speak in favor of the proposal?
I'm gonna, nobody else has their hand up, but Carol still has her, hers up. Carol, did you have something else to add to that?
Well, I'm just wondering what Vito means by amenities. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Carol.
Like a hot pot or?
Vito, I, I think you, if you want to answer more, you can. I believe you answered the question.
Yeah, I, similar to Arch Cape, yeah, I mean, similar, small, you know, cooking amenities.
Uh, okay, assuming there are no others with their hands raised who wish to speak in favor of the proposed development, are there comments from the public in opposition?
Point of order here, Madam Chair.
Sure.
Um, were you planning on establishing a time limit for any individual comments?
Um, yeah, our, our general limit that we do in our meetings is three minutes. If somebody's needs a couple extra minutes to really expound a point, that's okay. I hate to be a timekeeper because it, I'm looking at the clock and not listening as well. So I would hope people will self-regulate at three, but Scott, maybe you can help me, help me with that. I, I, I want to make sure we hear from everybody who has, you know, a, a point to make. It's, it's important that we do. And again, if written testimony has already been provided, we've seen it, we've read it, it's in the record. So hopefully the written testimony won't be repeated by the same people who, who submitted their letters. Does that answer the question?
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, Karen, as I, as I call the next person, I will start a stopwatch for you.
Okay.
I'll advise.
Yeah, if it, if it goes too much beyond three. Yeah, go ahead, Jenna.
Do we have a final count of public testimony that we've already received?
No, it's all, it's all online. I'd have to go in and add these numbers.
I, I'm gonna make a guess that it's forty-some letters?
Well, a lot of them are repeat, so I wouldn't say it was at exactly forty.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, so Carol, you've got your hand up again, and since we just talked to you, I'm gonna let you finish out your, your thought there. So go ahead. Oh. Well, maybe she put her hand down. Okay, Rick Nice, I'm gonna ask you to unmute yourself.
Good evening. My name is Rick Nice and I'm Principal Traffic Engineer with Greenlight Engineering. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of Oregon. I've been asked by concerned citizens of Manzanita to review the transportation impacts of the proposed development. I've submitted a June twentieth letter, which I encourage you to review in full, but it, you probably don't even have it in your hands quite yet. Um, so tonight I'll just touch on a few of the items I discovered when I was reviewing this project.
Yeah, Rick, real quick, that was forwarded to the planning commission and I'll double check, but I believe that has also been posted on the city website for the community.
Excellent, thank you.
I haven't seen it yet.
You haven't seen it? Okay, I'll resend it again.
Well, I just, I haven't looked at the email since three o'clock, so. Go ahead.
All right, thank, thank you. Sure. So in order to approve this application, the city must find that, and I quote, "The streets are adequate to support the anticipated traffic and the development will not overload the streets outside the planned area." "The applicant has thus far relied upon opinion and not data or substantial evidence in attempting to establish compliance with this requirement." "First, the city of Manzanita's downtown transportation plan evaluated the nearby intersections of US one oh one and Lenita Avenue and US one oh one and Manzanita Avenue and found that by 2022, these intersections would easily fail ODOT's mobility standards and result in unacceptable congestion." "You'll note that recently ODOT constructed some improvements at the, at those intersections, but at the US one oh one Lenita Avenue intersection, the improvements didn't actually add any intersection capacity." "The proposed development is expected to generate up to three hundred nine vehicle trips per day. A number of those trips will travel through those intersections, especially through the Lenita intersection. The applicant's traffic analysis didn't evaluate these intersections in any way whatsoever." "Next, the development has frontage on Classic Street. Due to the special needs of this Classic Street corridor, the downtown transportation plan adopted a specific cross-section for Classic Street that includes a forty-foot right-of-way, a twenty-foot, twenty-four-foot wide roadway, a ten-foot-wide shared bike ped path, which would be behind a six-foot-wide landscape strip buffer." "As you, I'm sure all of you know, the existing Classic Street is not compliant at all with that adopted cross-section. The paved width is approximately twenty-one to twenty-two feet wide today. It has no separated bike or ped facilities and no landscape buffer. For the development of this size that generates a substantial amount of traffic such as this one, this would be the perfect opportunity to implement the adopted plan and cons, implement the, the adopted plan and construct a portion of this cross-section along the development's frontage. Requiring such improvements as part of development is commonplace in communities across Oregon." "Next, when providing their opinion about the Classic Street-Dorcas Lane intersection, the applicant's traffic engineer noted, and I quote, "Volumes are typically low on these streets even during peak season. And while a detailed analysis has not been prepared for this review, it is expected the intersection operates at a level service A with very low delays with the two-way stop control. However, this intersection isn't even controlled as a two-way stop control, but as an always-stop, indicating a significant lack of knowledge and information about the area. It's questionable whether the applicant's, applicant's engineer was even on site to actually even review the impacts of this project."
Rick, I'm gonna pause you for a minute, let Karen know we're at three minutes and I gave him extra time.
Thank you. Therefore, commenting on levels of traffic volume.
You're muted, Karen. Karen, you're muted.
Thanks, sorry. I was gonna suggest that maybe you can wrap it up in another minute?
A minute or two, would, would that be okay?
Two max.
Okay, sounds good. Uh, so it's questionable whether the applicant's, applicant's engineer was even on site to review the impacts of this project, therefore commenting on the levels of traffic volume that occur throughout the peak season and, and the level of service at the intersection is likely very speculative. It is certainly not based upon substantial evidence in the record. "Next, the applicant suggested, in Lancaster Mobley, the city's contract traffic engineer agreed the two hundred eighty feet of sight distance should be required at a proposed site driveway to Dorcas Lane. The site driveway is proposed along the western property line. In order to achieve adequate sight distance, vegetation removal may be required from private property, possibly necessitating a sightline easement to ensure that adequate sight distance can be achieved and maintained for safety. The application provides no evidence that can, that the applicant can achieve and maintain this adequate sight distance." Uh, lastly, I'll note, uh, with regard to Dorcas Lane is, is that the veget, existing vegetation along Dorcas Lane actually serves as a buffer between Dorcas Lane and the properties on the north side. So that's something that I heard from the residents out there. Um, just in closing, um, wanted to note that the applicant's traffic engineer collected no traffic counts, performed no traffic, no intersection analysis, and may not have even been on site to review the project in person. Based on that information and lack of any other substantial evidence, I'd argue that the city cannot determine the streets are adequate to support the anticipated traffic and the development will not overload the streets outside the planned area as required based on the information in the record. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Rick. Okay, ne- next up would be John Billow or, yeah, John Billow. Uh, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Yeah, thanks. Um, can you remind me how many parking spots will be?
Fifty-three.
And how many, um, full-time employees or how many employees will be there, um, you know, working at, at maximum?
Uh, Walt, I'm gonna let you answer this. I don't believe that's part of this review.
No, uh, there was no mention in our, uh, cooking requirement to accommodate workers other than the manager, and that was two spaces.
Is that all you had, John?
Uh, yes, Dennis, thank you.
All right, thanks, John. Okay, next up is Jenny Stewart. You should be able to unmute yourself.
Hi, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I'm at Fourth Place and there is currently quite an issue with traffic, especially construction workers coming and going from their job, obeying the speed limits on South Fourth Place and move. One street turns into another, as you might be familiar, the stop sign. The setbacks are very minimal at that sidewalk. There's no safe area for pedestrians to move through that, it's being a hazard. Is it going to be taken into considerably initially that people will be moving down, turning on to Fourth Place? And then on to Treasure Cove, it's a short, which is a natural route that people take? Wishing that the impacts have not yet been seen for the occupancy above? And how that is already going to impact traffic below? Will that be reviewed before as well as after developments are completed and occupied?
All right, thank you, Jenny. Was, was that all you had?
My question.
Pardon me, you, you cut out there.
That is my question.
Okay, thank you. Okay, would somebody like to answer that one? Vito?
Um, at this juncture, we've received the traffic engineer's report from the applicant. We received the commentary from our traffic engineer, excuse me again, and the opponents now have a third traffic engineer, uh, report. I can't say that there would be any necessary follow-up other than to ensure compliance with whatever conditions would be, uh, attached to this, uh, uh, decision. Saying that, though, I, I know the city's actively interested in, uh, seeking ways to go ahead and do what needs to be done, uh, but we just don't have a mechanism to tie the level of improvement in with this particular project.
All right, thanks, Walt. Okay, next up is Jenny Stewart. You should be able to unmute yourself.
We, we just heard from Jenny.
Was that Jenny? Sorry about that. I'm trying to multitask here.
Scott, you're doing hero's work here today.
Okay. Dennis Lofman, I'm gonna let you unmute yourself. You should be able to unmute now.
Hello, good afternoon. Um, so I'm just going to, uh, speak to some issues around city code. Um, I've written a couple of letters. I hope that you've had the chance to review them. Um, one of the things that I found today is, um, and what I'm gonna talk about, I'm sure there's going to be a conversation about definitions. And I know I mentioned this in my letter, but like Hotel Motel, there's no definitions for that. Um, there's also no definition for a community building. And so the staff report lists that there's a community building on site. It's not a restaurant. If you look at the SRR zone, language for conditional uses permitted, it says community meeting building. If you look in the section four point one three six on planned unit developments under standard and require, standards and requirements, it states that a planned develop may include any uses and conditional uses permitted in any underlying zone. And then if you look under conditional uses under section five point zero four zero, a meeting hall or community center is listed with a number of conditions. Now, I recognize that this community sent, community building is supposed to be only for guests of the hotel, and so definitions could be argued in this instance. But I just wanted to point this out, that, that the language of the code or missing definitions create loopholes in this application that, that are very concerning to neighbors and, um, and residents and citizens of Manzanita. And so I just ask you to make sure that you are forcing the applicant to provide the burden of proof for the project as mandated by law, that you are not giving away your discretionary judgment in reviewing this project and reviewing all the details of the project that you have authority to review. Don't allow code requirements to be evaded or ignored in the PUD and SRR sections. And, you know, citizens are, they are, you know, we are ready to go to bat around this. I think you can tell that. There's a letter with over 120 signatures on it. So the other thing that I'll say is, you know, from my perspective, perhaps there is some anxiety and concern around this project within the planning commission itself. And what I would say is, I think that that concern is real and realistic, and I would encourage you to vote your doubt. Vote your doubt. The applicant can come back with a more robust application. You can wait for the wetland delineation to be approved by the state. If DSL and Army Corps of Engineers permits are required, they can be, he can have them in hand. If there is a wetland, those boundaries are delineated. If it impacts the layout, you will know that. There are just numerous pieces that are not clear, and so I would just encourage you.
Sorry about that. Karen, Denise, you're at three minutes. Karen, would you like me to let her continue?
Yeah, yeah, go ahead, Denise. It sounded like you were winding down.
I was. I'm not sure where I was muted, but I will just say, thank you for your time, and I'll end there.
All right, you were just about done, Denise. Thank you.
Yeah, I would like to say that we did receive your letters, both of your letters, Denise. Thank you.
Next up, Jenny Stewart, you should be able to unmute yourself. Jenny Stewart, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Scott, we just heard from Jenny, two citizens ago.
So I'm just going down the list and I'm removing them as they go, so they might be putting their hands back up. Okay, Matthew Goodrich, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Hello, could you hear me?
Yep, go ahead.
Oh, great, thank you. I'm just wondering, it just seems at this point in this community that there's a real movement to curtail short-term rental. And so one question I would have is, would this count as basically thirty-six short-term rentals where it would take rental permits away from neighboring areas? And I guess the other broader question I might ask is, if the city of Manzanita were to put a moratorium on any building, any more building of short-term rentals or short-term rental applications, would that put your process on hold? Thank you.
Do you want to answer that, Walt?
You're muted again, Walt.
Takes a little while between two screens. Let's see, the first thing is that these are not short-term rentals, and this would not affect anything to do with short-term rentals. The idea of a moratorium for short-term rentals, I'm not an attorney, but I would suspect that might be a legal issue, and that's really separate from commercial development. So I don't see this as impacting that.
Okay, next up is Rob and Sharon B. You should be able to unmute yourself. Rob and Sharon?
Okay, this is Rob Borkford, and I have some questions that are related to basic slope erosion, and I haven't heard them covered. And perhaps these already have been examined by the city contract planner. And we have no guardrail or pedestrian sidewalk. And so I'm looking at the planned view, and there's no side view or slice view or elevation view at different points along the planned view that's an accompanying print. And so one of the things I'm wondering is how far from the blacktop is the city right of way? Is it shown as the absolute edge on the west in that very small planned view? And I'm sorry, I don't have the downloaded PDF where I can really look at it. That's one question. And then the slope at different points, and that's what I was referring to on a slice type of view, that, you know, you can see in that planned view and from just driving along that street all the time, there's a dangerous slope there. And one of these days, a car is gonna go off, maybe a car-truck collision, and they're gonna go off. And prior to that, I'm sure that there will be a guardrail installed because it needs to be. So who owns what on the slope, for instance? And also, the, wondering if a geology study has been done of the slope stability analysis with the proper safety factor, the slope stability as far as sheer. And there was a quick reference by the developer of any needed digging along that slope, and I'm thinking as that road's going to be put in and other things, there is going to be some possible digging at the bottom. We have 123 inches this last rain year, according to what was submitted by the developer. And that's, of course, substantial, but as we know, when we drive south on 101 and we go through those areas where the road is not stable and there's a subsidence, this sort of thing happens. So I don't know if it's sand, or it's probably better than sand, but that road, as I recall, was not engineered like regular roads. It was a fast $35,000 blacktop job. And so what if there's a subsidence of Classic Street caused by downslope problems? In other words, developing to a street that's probably not as well engineered? There's gonna be massive finger pointing. So I do have a concern like the traffic safety engineer hired by citizens that it's a dangerous street already. I think if there's gonna be a pedestrian walkway, it's gonna have to be on the east side because there's sure no room for anything but a guardrail on the west side.
Rob, could you hold for a minute? We're at three minutes. If you could please wrap it up.
I'll wrap right now. I think you get the general idea.
All right, thanks, Rob. Okay, and I have, next up, Barbara Lee. And Barbara, you should be able to, you should be able, hold on here, something's going on. Barbara, I'm gonna put you on hold for a second. My computer's having an issue. Ben Rosenberg, I'm gonna let you go, and then I'll figure out Barbara's. You should be able to unmute yourself, Ben.
Hi there, this is Kim Rosenberg. We share. I live at 280 Edmund Lane. The last commission meeting, it was very clear that many of the commissioners are uneasy with this application for real reasons, and they're the same reasons the community is concerned. The applicant says he wants to be a good neighbor, but he hasn't even spoken to the golf course, and he won't have 24-hour staff on site to deal with 34 units and problems that will arise. I used to work at a B&amp;B, and all the problems happen at night. We're not supposed to talk about that today, but this is, these are the things that people are concerned about. This is the reason it's hard for us to wrap our minds around what's happening on that site. My dad was an amateur woodworker, and he used to say, "Measure twice and cut once." And that's all that I think most of us are asking, that if you have doubts about this application, then vote your doubt and let him come back with a more robust application. Thank you very much for your time.
All right, thank you, Kim. Okay, Barbara, we're gonna try yours one more. For some reason, Barbara, it's not letting. Oh, Barbara, you're unable to speak because you're in an older version of Zoom. I'm gonna try something in a minute, but I'm gonna let Linda Kuestner go first. Linda, go ahead.
Hi, thank you. I'm curious about the developers' idea that all of the verdant greenage that's gonna keep that development safe from golf balls is on another person's property. And am I misunderstanding the property line and where all those trees and greenage are going to be maintained? And that is gonna keep dogs and children from wandering off along a property line they don't see? I'm really concerned about safety and just in general, not really in favor of this project and understand the planning commission's limitations to do anything about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. Okay, Barbara, I'm gonna, I have to promote you to panelist for you to be able to speak. And you should have a deal that'll let you unmute now. Nope, her audio's connecting. Give her just a minute. Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna actually take the next person until we'll see if Barbara can connect audio. She's using an older version of Zoom, so it's not allowing her to speak as an attendee, and I tried to promote her as a panelist, and she should be able to, but it doesn't seem to be working. So Ivana, I'm gonna let you speak now, and you should be able to unmute.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for letting me speak. Vito, I'm gonna direct this to you. You said you want to be a good neighbor, and I feel like a first step in being a good neighbor, I'm sure you've seen, I mean, the majority of the people in Manzanita are against what you're doing. And, and I get you have good aesthetics and all that, but the number, there's just so many. The volume of the number of people that you're having staying at this hotel is just more than our little community can take. And I feel like if you want to be a good neighbor, start now. Start now, and before you start bulldozing and doing things, let the state come in and look at the wetlands. Listen, maybe have some sort of mediation. Talk to your neighbors. Talk to the people on Dorcas. Talk to the people on Classic, the people on Ridge Road. Have some sort of communication with us. Talk to the golf course. You know, maybe we can come to a concession of like maybe less rooms, maybe get rid of the event space. But I feel like if you're gonna be a good neighbor, now's the time to do it. Now's the time not to make the planning commission have to make a decision, but just voluntarily say, "I'm gonna stop, I'm gonna take a breath, and I'm gonna hear and really listen to the concerns of the people that are living around this development that I'm creating." Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Barbara, if you can hear me, I'll let you go ahead and speak now. Hopefully that worked. Okay, I don't think Barbara's able to actually connect via audio. So we have a couple more hands up. Donna Miller, I'm gonna allow you to speak now. You should be able to unmute.
Hi, this is Donna Miller, and I just want to reiterate the traffic impact. And I guess I didn't clearly understand if someone on the planning commission can tell me, has there been a traffic study done that, you know, talks about the impact of this, and is that in your jurisdiction? Or does that fall on the city? I'm a little confused about that.
All right, thank you, Donna. Walt, I'm gonna let you answer that one.
Yes, the applicant submitted a traffic study that was also reviewed by the city traffic engineer, and basically they were in concurrence.
Okay, and I have, hands keep popping up. So next would be Deborah Simmons. You should be able to unmute yourself.
Yes, thank you. Deb Simmons here, and as I understand the citizens, I'm sorry, I live at 256 Treasure Cove Lane. The citizens, concerned citizens of Manzanita also paid for a traffic evaluation to answer Donna's question. I was curious, who is liable? I share Jenna's concern about the safety, and I have spent some time on that golf course. Who is liable when someone gets hit by a golf ball there or the windshield gets crashed? Does anybody know? Is that the city's responsibility? I mean, is the city liable?
Well, I'm not an attorney, but I would say that it's left to the attorneys. I don't think the city has liability, but that's gonna be between the injured party and whoever's hit the ball. Again, I can't give a legal response, but I don't believe the city is liable.
Okay, next up is Paul Hughes. Paul, you should be able to unmute yourself now.
Can you hear me? But there's an echo. I know, I'm getting an echo for you too. This is Barbara Lee, and I'm on another computer. Yeah, I don't know about the echo.
So you probably have a second audio device connected that's being picked up on the audio from another device. Okay, I think we lost, that was Barbara, I believe, trying to get in on somebody else.
I sent you. I sent you an email.
Okay, Barbara, thank you. Okay, and the last, last hand I have up is Frank B., and maybe it's one that I had missed or didn't take down. But Frank, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Yes. Good evening. Thank you very much for taking my question here. I don't believe this has been covered, but my concern is the responsibility of first responders. Manzanita, as it is, is covered by a volunteer fire department. I know you talked about turning radiuses of the vehicles and all that, but with volunteers, you are expecting first responders to volunteer even more of themselves for something like this. And also, the Manzanita Police Department has a very low staff ratio. And my concern is, especially during the summertime, as you've raised the issue of the increased volume of traffic, there will be more accidents. So there will be more of a greater need for first- So there will be more of a greater need for first responders. Typically, the volunteer fire department takes care of accidents and, and, and people that have. Had problems besides the ones that, you know, about on the beach and everything. Will Vito and his development company? Consider creating a full-time fire department because I feel that Manzanita right now is at a breaking point. For going from volunteer fire department as the, the fire department covers more than the city of Manzanita, as you know. And the police department. It would, is taxed enough as it is. And I was just wondering if they would be willing to, or through their taxes, pay for an additional staff on the police department as well. And just a comment from the beginning, I know Walt mentioned there were two separate things going on and we can't. Think about this one thing because it wasn't covered in time or whatever was, and excuse me, I haven't done. My homework or anything, but I've just been listening to this. And it seems to me it just goes against the, the spirit of the law and what citizens and the majority of people want. Here, even if it has not been enacted in a reasonable amount of time. That is my comment and I thank you all for your time and consideration.
All right, thank you, Frank. Let's see here. Next up is gonna be Corinna. Corinna, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Okay, can you hear me now? Yes. Okay, so I see the people walking on Dorcas. I live at Dorcas and Fift. A lot of young people, children on their bikes every day, a lot. They walk in a horizontal line, just calmly peacefully on Dorcas. I see cars passing stop signs. And when driving on a weekend to Cardam, I see how Classic is busy. And the walkers have nowhere to go but to go in the ditch. So I'm curious, is anything gonna be done on Dorcas? We have no sidewalks, no sidewalks on Classic. Is anything gonna be done? To accommodate this big number of people staying in this big place? Thank you.
Scott, you're, you're muted. Did you want to?
Sorry about that, Karen.
Keep in for one second on that. I want to make sure everybody realizes the city is moving on a design plan to, to reconstruct Dorcas Lane. From classic intersection all the way down to the post office. On fourth and then down fourth. As part of that, the reconstruction will add the storm system and things like that. It also will take away the current drainage ditches that, that eat up a lot of the side road real estate. So that project, we are looking at trying to put that to bid in September. And hopefully start the project construction in October.
Sorry, Dan, was that you talking? Dan Wetzel?
Yes, Karen.
Okay, thank you. I didn't see a little box with your name on it. So thank you for commenting on that. I appreciate it.
Okay, now Eric Hanson, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Hi, thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to, I, I didn't really have a lot of new information to add. I just wanted to second the opinion, the second what other people had said. I think that. Denise made a lot of good points when she was speaking earlier. I also think she made a lot of good points in her letter dated June seventeenth. I also wanted to second Jenna's concerns about golf balls coming off the, the tee at the five hole. I walked by there quite a bit and it's kind of shocking how bad some people are at hitting a golf ball off of a tee. And I wanted to second what Steve said and, and just emphasize the fact that there are a lot of people in this community who are. Very concerned about just not. Not just this development in particular, but I feel like this development has kind of, this proposed development is, is. Sort of been a breaking point for a lot of people in the community. And there are just a lot of people who are just really not in favor of it and it's. I'm sure it's, only a fraction of them are speaking here because it's surprisingly nerve wracking to speak even with your face hidden on a Zoom call. That was it. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Eric. Let's see, I have one more hand up. Carol Kennedy, I don't know if you've already spoke or. If you, your hand went back up, but go ahead, Carol, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Yeah, thank you. I did already speak, but I just wanted to summarize a little bit about the safety issues that are, that are. Kind of multiplying. As many people know, my parents had a condominium in a large complex. And there was a fire and it devastated and it spread rapidly and in our. Time of environmental concerns, I mean, fires are just one of the issues. Vito described cooking amenities. We really don't know what that means. To me, that's very vague. The golf balls, he doesn't want to put up a fence. The safety of pedestrians in a high, high traffic area. No onsite manager is proposed, the noise density and pets. I mean, I just, I just think this whole project needs to be reconsidered. And I appreciate Vito's good intentions and I, I know his project in Arch Cape is lovely. And the pictures are nice, but this just is not the right setting for this kind of a dense project at this time. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol. Karen, can I clarify something with you really quick?
Yep.
I'm seeing people re-raise their hands. So how many, do we just keep letting them make comments or do we, how do we handle that?
Um, I, if there's new information to share. That would be great. It's already almost seven o'clock and I want to make sure that, that we hear. You know, everything that needs to be said, but if there's a lot of repetition. It would be great just to say, I agree, I agree, I agree. Does that make sense? Is that fair?
It does. And with that said, the, the next one actually lowered their hand. So. At this time, we have no more com, uh, now I've got one more hand.
Okay, great.
I see what happened. Okay, Jim, you should be able to unmute yourself.
My question concerns the wetlands. If DSL comes back with changes that needs to be done to the development. The replacing of the buildings in different spots, will the public be given a chance to make their comments on it before it's approved? That's it.
All right, thanks, Jim.
If there is a modification to the layout due to wetland issues, the applicant has to return to the planning commission.
With a new application or request to modify?
Right, because exactly, request to modify.
And it would open the whole comment period again?
This is a public hearing.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Do you want me to bring you something to eat?
No.
Anybody else?
Karen, with that, that was the last hand that we had.
Okay. Okay. I think that's. I do want to reiterate that the letters that were posted on the city's website have been reviewed by all of us and are part of the record. So thank you for that. And thank you to all of the people. What did you tell me, Scott? Forty-eight? People attended this meeting?
I think we had a, up to forty-nine.
Okay, it, that's remarkable and it shows the depth of concern and care that people have for the community. And as planning commissioners, we appreciate hearing from you. Okay. Vito, it's your turn now to respond to any points that were raised by members of the audience, if you wish.
Um, yeah, thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to follow up just globally because there's a lot of points met. Again, just talking about the, you know, starting with the zoning and being an SRR zone, I, I heard that there were some. You know, concerns and complaints about zoning of this property and the development of this property, but also just Manzanita as a whole. And how, how the development, you know, I, I grew up in a, in a small town in Arch Cape and. Change is always hard to see happen, but. I, I, I think a lot of it has to do with the. With the zoning and how the cities and the comp plans and the, the planning commission, as well as the zoning ordinances set, set the course. So in this case, just being an SRR zone. There's obviously has been established as an area that the city has established for, for this use. It's not even a conditional use, it's an outright. Permitted use to have a hotel motel and the amenities to go along with it in this zone. I don't know, you know, in the past when this was established, if that was to offset rentals in other aspects of. Manzanita, those are other concerns brought up, just the influx of rentals in the area. There was, there's questions and comments about the safety and, you know, I. I understand the safety and the concern. I also, you know. Having, you know, the proposed design as well as, you know, hopefully the future development of the site, I have the same concerns and. The success of the project is, is, is based on, you know, ensuring that guests on the site and the neighborhood and everyone is safe at, at all times. That, that relates to both onsite with the use, the traffic. A lot of the, a lot of the, the reviews of this project have, have gone through a number of meetings. So I met with the sewer, I met with the water. I met with the fire department to review public safety. For access for fire sprinklers. I hired an independent traffic engineer to review the site as well as have the city follow up with their traffic study. And had confirmation. So there's been a lot of effort. I don't, you know, there's comments about the, the lacking information that was been submitted, but. I would disagree. I think I've, I've put a lot of energy and effort to review with all the agencies, all the design guidelines, as well as. The written code of this, of the zone. So I, you know, I, I share concerns and I want, I want this to be a safe and successful place for. For the property as well as the surrounding neighborhoods, but a lot of effort's been put into reviewing this and, and ensuring that it meets the, the code. Established by the city of Manzanita. So I, I guess in closing, I would just like to hit again on the, the use, I'd like to hit on the. Attention to detail of the design. I know that's not a huge aspect of this, but I've put a lot of effort and energy to blend this into the natural environment and the landscape and keeping the. Lock coverage down to thirty percent when forty percent's allowed. There's keeping the vegetation. I'd like to play off the neighbors and really, you know. Have that, have that commonality between the golf course and the greenery and, and the, the landscaping and greenscape, scape on the property itself. So. I guess in closing, I respect and appreciate everyone's comments. And I hope that I've, you know, answered and given enough information for, for the planning commission as well as some of the community comments.
Thank you. Okay, um, I am going to now close the public comment portion of this hearing and we'll invite discussion by and among the. Commission.
Karen, I, I did have a hand raised when Vito began speaking. I don't know if we need, need to let him speak. One more person.
Um, all right, I will allow one more person and then I'll allow Vito the opportunity to respond to that comment. But I think we're. Beyond the point of additional public comment unless. There's something critical and we need to hear.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that if somebody has their hand up that we're not cutting them short. So.
Right.
Brad, I'm gonna ask you to unmute yourself and, and if you have something new to add, please go ahead.
Yeah, I, I would just like to understand this process a little further and. It seems to me that a lot of the issues and. The issues that have been raised have been based on. And based on the, the comprehensive plan and zoning ordinances. And would we be able to? Suggest that that's a failure of the current administration to update those plans or to. Revisit those plans or is, I, I, I would just like some comment on that, please.
If, if you don't mind, I'd like to answer that. As best I can. I've been on the planning commission for a long time. And if I understand correctly, small cities, as tiny as ours is, are not required. To update their comprehensive plans. On a regular basis. And when our plan came up for its twenty-year renewal or review. The city at that time determined that. It wasn't necessary. Doing a plan review is expensive. And time consuming. And at that time, the city made a decision that it was not a critical need. For the city to follow. I think it's pretty clear that that is no longer true. And that we do need to do those updates. However, it will take time and money to do. And if I'm not speaking out of turn, I believe that the city in its budget has approved or will approve a line item for. The beginning of a comp plan review. In the next fiscal year. So we, we have heard you. We are taking it seriously. The city council has taken your interests seriously enough to commit some money to it. So do, I, I hope it, it doesn't help. With this situation right here today. But it's the beginning of a process that will allow us all to have the bigger, deeper conversation about what. We want to see going forward in the city. Is that a reasonable answer, staff? If you correct me if I'm wrong.
Spot on.
Okay, okay. Okay. Vito, I, I guess that's not really something that you would respond to, but feel free if you'd like.
No, I mean, I guess my only response is that. It, it sounds like there is gonna be effort forward on, on the zoning ordinance, but in this, in this case, I. I feel like I've, I've followed the protocol of the city of Manzanita with their zoning guidelines, with the pre-op meetings, with the. The meetings with the planning commission and following up with all additional information. And guidelines required and outlined by, by the code in the city of Manzanita. So I just want to, you know, thank the planning commission and also. Thank the, I guess the agencies, the building department, fire and, you know, water and sewer for their. Effort to, you know, present and give you guys all the information. And I think above the information that has been provided to a lot of applications previously. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I am now officially closing the public. Comment portion of this discussion and we'll invite discussion by the commission. Commission members may ask additional questions of the applicant, audience members or staff. But we are now to the point where discussion will be limited primarily to the commission. I would like to off, just suggest that if you have. Additional. Comments to make, commission, based on the information we've heard today, the testimony from both the applicant. The staff report and the public. Please feel free. And if you are not. Um, and if you are not prepared to make general comments, um, I have a couple of things that I'd like to ask um, as far as whether it's appropriate to add to conditions. Um, but the way we're gonna um, finish this out is to go through the staff report and I want to hear a consensus on whether each of the items um, the the significant items that the applicant is required to follow have been met before we before we uh, make a final decision. So the two things that I have are um, is it appropriate to add a condition um, that a geotechnical report should be done on the area that has that significant slope, even though it's not intended to be developed? Um, I I'm not sure if digging out below the slope will cause any problems. Is that a, is that a reasonable request to make?
I would agree with that.
Okay. Anybody else?
Yeah, I think it would be a good idea.
Okay. Um, then my next suggestion is um, that clearly traffic and pedestrian access on Dorcas is an issue. Um, is it unreasonable to ask that the applicant install sidewalk along Dorcas, at least with a curb uh, along the Dorcas frontage and around the corner or up to the corner of Classic so that it directs pedestrian and bike traffic coming out of the development? Uh, it it directs an awareness that there is an act, there's a street there, that it's a weird intersection and that they should pause before they step out um, beyond the development. And along with that, I would suggest a sidewalk along the exit or the access point so that pedestrians are not walking up a driveway um, that cars, that vehicles are coming down as they're exiting. Is, are those unreasonable things to ask?
I don't think so, Karen. I think you're very reasonable.
Okay, and did, did what I said make sense?
Yes, it does.
Go ahead, Phil.
Karen, how are you gonna coordinate that with the the project that Dan talked about?
Well, what I'm talking about is on the applicant's property that they would install a sidewalk resting places um, for um, the public to use as they're exiting the property. So it's not on the city property.
Okay, so long as it's on his property and not the city's right of way.
Right, and that would help with the clear view um, traffic as well, to have a certain amount of sidewalk space that's not vegetation right up to the property property line.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Lee?
Karen, are you talking about a sidewalk that runs all the way up the drive from down at the base of the hill to the top?
Um, not the entire development, but I I mean, I, in it, it would make sense if there was a way for people to walk since some of the um, parking spaces are a distance away, but I don't want to get into the weeds on that. But yeah, I'm talking about a path that pedestrians can use to exit the property and enter the property without being in a in a vehicular lane.
Oh, you asked the question before you spoke on this that was it unreasonable? It might be unreasonable depending upon the topography and the width of the final width of the roadway and a walking area as well. It might not be able to be done.
Okay.
Hi, Madam Chair. Sorry, I should have introduced myself the last time. Sabani Miller, I'm an attorney. I'm here today um, representing the city and able to advise you on the process and make sure that um, if you have any questions about your role or the decision that I'm available to you. I did have a clarifying question on these two um, items that you're considering now, the sidewalk and the geotechnical review. So like the other conditions of approval, those will need to be tied to um, a condition of approval or some other input from some other agency about their requirements. So I, my my clarifying question would be um, how are these two requirements or which which, in your mind, which criteria are these two requirements going forward?
Um, that's a good question.
And it may be something that you consider as you're walking through the um, further criteria.
Okay, yeah, that's, thank you. I appreciate that. And that is something that I asked everyone else to do and didn't follow that instruction myself, so. Thank you. I appreciate that and we'll we'll look at those. Lee?
Karen, oftentimes the geotechnical report is part of the building responsibility. Um, I don't think it necessarily falls under our purview.
Karen, if I could add something to that real quick?
Mm-hmm.
The geotech is going to be required for this property based on our our overlay zone. So that is going to be a requirement in building.
Okay, because of the slope, it's already automatically part of the?
Be, yeah, so we have a map on on the website that that does show where it's required and that over half that property is required for to have a geotech.
Okay.
So it'll be covered.
Thank you, Scott. All right, so we don't have to worry about finding an applicable code reference for that one, but the sidewalks possibly. Okay. Any, um, let me see, I didn't. Um, I don't have anything else as far as I I am concerned about the um, the streets. I'm concerned that Dorcas um, does not have the capacity to manage an extra three hundred nine or however many it was vehicular trips a day. Um, uh, the Highlands development is also pretty highly um, uh, it's not particularly dense, but it's a big development. It also has frontage on two different streets so that all of the traffic isn't going to be funneled for that whole development onto one tiny narrow little street. It's it's frontage is on two major streets. So I think it's fair for us to consider that Dorcas is is a is a short little narrow street. And it's just the the topography of that intersection is weird um, with it not being aligned. And so I I I'm very concerned about that and um, I know that there's a specific spot for that um, when we go through the requirements that I intend to bring up at that point.
Can I ask a question about that or am I allowed to ask a question?
Um.
On that statement about the traffic?
Um, y- yeah, I mean, I I think we've heard from you on that, but go ahead.
I just, I mean, I understand your concerns. I just don't, I'd like to know where the concerns are coming from in the fact that that my traffic engineer, you know, did gave gave course that it, there was no impact. And then the city and Public Works and Dan hired a third-party review, which also came back that there was no concern. So just curious like where the where that comment is is stemming from.
My concern is that there were no traffic counts done. And I live here. I mean, I live right around the corner from there and I walk Classic and Dorcas almost every day.
Okay.
So that's, my concern is um, on the ground. Others, others on the commission might feel differently about that, but that's that, we're talking about me right here. I do want to say, since um, we're having a conversation, Vito, that I really do appreciate the way you broke the develop up, development up and do um, a variety of building types and structures and allowed for airspace in between. I think um, you've done a good job of of uh, attempting to blend uh, and harmonize your development with um, rest of the neighborhood. So I I do want to acknowledge that and um, with that, I'm gonna close my my own mouth and encourage other members to speak.
Thank you.
I want to jump in here and uh, and say that I agree wholeheartedly with Karen in regard to the traffic issue. Uh, I I don't live on Dorcas, but I drive through there frequently and I use Classic. And uh, the traffic issue on Dorcas is is very serious on uh, on weekends and the uh, in offseason, as well as most of the time during the vacation season. And uh, there's also a problem with uh, the amount of traffic uh, that moves over from Classic, uh, that last block of Classic to to, excuse me, to to Lenida. That stop sign on Lenida and Classic is becoming uh, almost as much of an issue as the uh, four-way stop down at Fourth Street in in uh, Lenida. So what is the biggest concern I've got is this will be the largest motel complex in Manzanita and it's lur- located completely away from the downtown core. So the traffic that comes out of there is is definitely going to have an impact uh, on Dorcas, on Classic, on all Lenida. And uh, the only place I seal seem to deal with that in the uh, in the city code is under section four point one three six point three three E of the plan, Plan Development Language. Uh, specifically where it states states that the streets are adequate to support the anticipated traffic and the development will not overload the streets outside the planned area. So I think the key word there is overload. And and I think that's where we're headed with this. Uh, Grant can agree that the traffic study did not do a traffic count, but it shows a peak uh, vehicle count of three hundred and nine on the weekends, on Saturday, I believe. And uh, that's what you're gonna see or something close to that uh, during the peak season, the summertime, on other days of the week. So that traffic is going to use Dorcas, it's going to use uh, Classic. It's going to be a major issue. If this motel complex is located downtown, you wouldn't have the the traffic flow added in that's going to move out of this complex into the downtown cores. People going on to a shop, go to the beach, uh, uh, that kind of thing. So it's a major concern and major issue.
Thank you, John. Any, Jenna?
I, I'll add to to traffic. Um, just running and walking there this weekend, even this morning, um, I have pictures from my walk this morning that have one, two, three, four, five, six cars parked on the corner, on multiple corners around Classic, Lenida, um, where Classic continues that are obstructing the right of way in present day. Um, I don't know if this is the right time to add um, as a condition, a a plan for for fencing or some safety to not give access onto the golf course as a condition. I don't, I don't know if it's up there. I I want to bring the example that we had on a project on Lenida um, several months ago, where we required fencing to be put up so that it didn't ha- penetrate um, lights from parking cars into the neighbors yards. And we added that as a requirement. So I think we should be able to add something to that, to a condition.
Yeah, that that was a design review, I think, and it has different criteria. Um, but as we go through the criteria, let's see if if it's possible to add that, because I agree, I I think some kind of a boundary designation would be really important for people who don't live here and don't know where the boundary is um, to go from you know, a treat area through another treat area. Um, it's really hard to to know that, um, oh, oops, I just um, messed up somebody's golf game, so. Uh, anybody else or do you want to add anything else, Jenna?
Uh, no, I'm good, thank you.
Lee?
I want to go back to uh, a comment I made to Vito a couple of months ago at one of our meetings. And Vito, I cannot stress this enough. You said you want to be a good neighbor, that you want to have minimal impact with your development. And that's great to say that, but not having onsite management twenty-four seven, I think is a huge mistake. I know I mentioned it to you then. I thought that was one of the most important pieces of this development. Um, you mentioned in some document I saw today that you would follow the procedures by other um, motels in the area. And that's true with a couple of the small motels. However, the largest motel does have twenty-four seven onsite management. And you're going to have plenty of buildings there. You can house somebody in one of them. I understand the bottom line gets smaller. But man, if you want to do something to kind of limit the volatility that this development is likely to create, that would be the most important.
Okay, Bert or Steve, do you have?
Yeah, I had a, I would uh, like to add a condition that uh, would maintain the uh, hundred and fifteen thousand square feet of uh, open area, open space that will be devoted to uh, uh, the uh, use of the residents of the uh, of the development or clients of the development that they can have for uh, gathering and uh, and recreation. And if there, and the the issue is if something happens during the uh, can that design as it goes on, that no more space is needed for, parking is taken away and more parking is needed. And somebody says, well, let's use some of this open space. I want that decision to come back to the planning commission to say, yes, uh, that's legitimate use of the open space or no, we must maintain that open space for the benefit of the uh, development.
Um, do you know where, what part of the criteria that would fall under, Bert, offhand? Or would, will we look for it as we go through?
The uh, I'd say looking forward it as we go through. I can't pinpoint that right now. The only reference to open space is one that I discussed earlier, where it says the uh, the plan had to show the open space and uses of the open space. And that's uh, as, and that's a place where the condition could be placed in that part of the uh, review.
Okay. Um, Steve, did you have anything? Um, unmute yourself.
I do. Uh, Vito is is very concerned about meeting all the ordinances and he really has, and I want to compliment him on how diligent he has been getting all these things done. But the problem I have is the things that concern us the most are not covered by the ordinances. That's the the management, that's the traffic, that's the compatibility to the neighborhood. Those are the things that that paramount importance for most of people uh, involved with this are going to be affected by it and we can't do anything about it. And so I, I this, it's been said, you know, so many unanswered questions. I just know, I, it's hard for me to say, yes, go ahead with the program.
Phil, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Well, not at this time.
Okay. Okay, um, with that said, then let's take a look, starting on I want to start on page. Sorry. summary. Okay, on page four of the staff report, you all have that in front of you? It's the Planned Unit Development Provisions.
Are you going to put it on the screen?
I don't have the capacity to do that. Do you, Scott or Walt, have the capacity to put the staff report on the screen?
It'll take a few minutes to get that pulled up, Karen. Everybody should have access to it on the website. But give me a few minutes.
Okay. What I want to do is go through, these are the specific criteria related to a planned unit development. And then following that are the standards from the R, I'm sorry, SRR zone. And our staff has identified which provisions in the code are applicable to this development and suggested findings related to each one of those standards or requirements. And so what I want to do, I don't want to read through the whole staff report again, but I do want to just talk about starting on page four. Planned unit development procedures in section 4.136 are used to evaluate development proposals in the SRR zone. And then one section just reviews the purpose of a planned unit development. And it's just, oh, thank you. It's just a reiteration that there is not a request to modify the applicable development standards. The next Plan A2 is establishes certain standards and requirements that it may include uses or conditional uses in an underlying zone that a developer can aggregate buildings in a PUD and that the city might require some financial arrangements to make sure that everything gets done. The staff has said that there is no the first section regarding the purpose of a planned unit development doesn't really apply. And that the proposal under 4.136.2 finds that the proposal would establish a hotel, which is an outright use in the zone. Doesn't require dwellings, dwellings. So even though he has clustered buildings, it's not required. And that bonding or financial arrangement is applicable and it's available to the city. And I believe is a requirement. So what I'm going to ask is, are these two sections that I've just described, does the application comply with these items? And I'd just like a simple yes or no, if you can give me one, from the commission. You agree with the findings?
I agree, Karen.
Okay, anybody else?
I would agree, Karen.
I would agree.
I agree.
Okay. And I, I agree, and I think I might have missed one. Did everybody?
I agree.
Okay, thank you. That was the one. Okay. Okay, the next section addresses the procedure that the applicant and the city need to follow. And the the findings are that the applicant, the material submitted complies with the provisions in the section and that the city has complied with its requirements to notify and distribute the information. The findings are that both of those items are met. Is there any disagreements? This would be on the next page, Scott, if you're, if it's you that's sharing page five.
Should be, should be this section right here, one.
Yep, it's items one and two.
Yep.
Hear one, yes?
That was just me saying yes.
Oh, oops.
Sorry.
You don't count, Scott, sorry.
I agree with those findings.
Yes, I agree.
I agree.
Jenna agrees.
I agree.
Yes.
I agree, and I agree. Okay, thank you. The next items are procedures that the Planning Commission what am I looking at here? That will consider it at a meeting, which we have done. And that the comments of persons reviewing the plan for study shall be reviewed, which we have. Have we determined that there are physical conditions? Actually, the staff report says that applicant is not departing from the standard ordinance requirements. And there are some provisions listed below that the development is not inconsistent with the comprehensive plan provisions or zoning objectives in the area. And I think yeah, that was it. So it's the remainder of page five and all, almost all of page six. So it's the staff report point three, sub A and sub B.
What page are we on, Karen?
And we're on pages five and six.
Five and six, okay.
So the numbered items on page five are 3A and B, and it continues on to page six.
I do not agree with 3B. And that addresses the comprehensive plan. I think we are allowed to use the comprehensive plan in our decision-making, and that is based off a that's based off the Oregon Planning Commission Handbook.
Okay.
That's very interesting wording, because it says, will be, will not be inconsistent with comprehensive plan provision for zoning objection of the area. This is particularly, so does that single that out, or can we still go back to the comp plan?
If I'm reading it correctly, the staff report says that the comp plan doesn't apply in a I can't remember what the exact wording is, but a limited use application.
Limited land use application, yes. And that's that's, so under Oregon law, that applies to limited land use applications and the definition that Walt read out. The comp plan procedures have, the comp plan, if there are any comp plan standards that are going to apply directly to this application for that type of a decision, they have to be specifically spelled out in the ordinance.
In the zoning ordinance.
Yeah, for a limited land use decision.
Okay.
Do we still have the city attorney on here?
Yep, that's who was just speaking.
Okay, it sounded like Lila.
So let's, since Jenna had an objection, let's break it into A and B. Are there do we agree with the staff findings on 3A?
I agree.
Yeah, I would agree.
I agree.
I agree.
I think that was everybody. I also agree. Okay, then how about 3B? Jenna, do you want to change the record or you want to leave it where you are?
I will leave it where I am.
Okay, thank you.
I don't know what to say on that. I mean, I've been on the Planning Commission for eight years and we have always relied on that comp plan to be there. And I think Walt brought that up in the March meeting, and it kind of surprised me then. I don't know. I guess I could say I, I agree under duress, but I'm not real happy with it.
You can, you can say no, John.
Okay, I'm going to say no.
I'm going to say no as well. I think the comp plan is referred to and away from the zoning ordinance that makes it very clear that the information, there is information in the in the comp plan that could have been repeated in the zoning ordinance and was not.
So is, is, what's your, what's your?
I'm saying the references to the comp plan are, from the zoning ordinance are legitimate and I follow them.
Okay, so you disagree with the, with staff findings then?
Yes, I disagree.
Thank you.
I also disagree.
Okay. Who did, who did I miss? Lee?
I disagree.
And Steve?
I disagree.
Okay, I'm going to agree. So. Okay. On to
Can I ask a clarifying question here? So it seems like there's a I didn't exactly touch the count, but that seems like an issue that could be a definitive one on this application. So my next question would be, if there are, so if you are interpreting that provision of the code to incorporate some piece of the comp plan, then the next step might would be to consider which pieces of the comp plan would apply and have those been met. And I'm you as the, as the, as the commission.
Anyone have a point of reference?
Well, oops, am I on mute? Okay. Comprehensive plan policies state in item number one, the plan overrides other city ordinances such as zoning when there is a conflict. And I think clearly there's a conflict here.
What, what's the?
What's the conflict?
No, no, I understand the conflict. What's the citation? Are you quoting from the zoning ordinance?
I was quoting from the comp plan.
And what, where in the comp plan is that?
That is plan policies. Item number one, comprehensive plan policies. The overall policies of the plan are, and that's item number one. The plan overrides other city ordinances where there is a conflict.
Are there any other references that you want to incorporate, Jenna?
I would like to incorporate from the comp plan. It's on page nine. I guess I'm going to shorten this, but the purpose of the SRR zone is intended for major unplanted, unplatted land areas where dwellings are appropriate. I would say that the SRR zone is no longer a major unplanted, unplatted land area. A few sentences down, uses may include single-family or multifamily dwellings and commercial uses developed to serve the development. This hotel is not serving the residents of the community and the neighboring zones.
Do the other commissioners agree with Lee and Jenna's assessment?
Yeah, I would agree.
I would agree. Had to go find my comp plan. My battery ran low.
Yeah, I agree.
So I'm waiting for Lee and Phil, is that correct?
Oh, I thought I said I agreed.
Oh, I may not have heard you.
I'm a little hesitant about this. I guess I'll say I agree.
Okay. I'm going to be the naysayer.
If there are questions that I can help answer on the hesitation, please feel free to to ask.
The, I, I just want to say, if it helps, the reason that I'm disagreeing is that our attorney has looked at this and is advising, and that if we decide to reject this application based on this, we may very well likely be reversed at Luba, assuming that there's an appeal. And that's fine. If we're reversed, we're reversed if this is our decision. But I'm basing my reading on what are, it's, it's kind of a technical issue as far as way back when we didn't do something. But because we didn't do that thing, I, I'm relying on our attorney to advise us. So that's, that's where my yes comes from. And, you know, I I'll leave it at that.
That's I think that's an accurate summary of everything that staff has reported on this point and myself, and legal inclusion.
Thank you.
I think
I was kind of looking for I was kind of looking for legal opinion, and I'm glad it was stated that way. It doesn't make it any easier. There's two places in the comprehensive plan I wanted to point out. Page six, under Land Use Objectives, number three. It states, prevent the concentration of uses which would overload streets and other public facilities, or destroy living quality and natural amenities. And page seven, under Residential Land Use Objectives, number three states, protect the character and quality of existing residential areas and neighborhoods from incompatible new development. Going back to, to page six, where it refers to concentration of uses which would overload streets. Can I interpret that to be reflected in the Plan Development Land Use Code, which also refers be reflected in the uh, land development, land use code, which also uh, refers to overloading streets?
The, yeah, the overloading, um overloading street is one of the criteria before you, and I don't, I don't think you're there yet, but that is, that is a piece of the, that part of the comprehensive plan, and that's, it's also a piece of the ordinance and one of the criteria that you're considering.
Are you saying uh, that it comes up uh, a little further down in the staff review? I'll bring it up at that point.
Can I reiterate the, why I think that the comprehensive plan is, is a document that we can use?
Sure.
According to the Oregon Planning Commission Handbook. Page eighteen, the role of the comprehensive plan. It states, a comprehensive plan and the zoning code play important roles in each land use decision. However, zoning code is often seen as the controlling document. Nevertheless, three Oregon court cases confirmed that the plan is the legally controlling document.
Okay, are we ready, ready to move on? Okay. I hope somebody's also making notes on what we're saying here, so that when we get to the end of this, we can review. Um, okay, so we've done C, A, and B. C three states, the area around the development can be planned to be in substantial harmony with the proposed plan. Um, the findings are um, essentially that residential development is the primary activity in the vicinity. Um, topography places most of the structures below the residential uses to the east. Golf course canopy to the west provides separation and screening. Um, and then it goes on to talk about hotels specifically as a permitted use along with residential development. And then meeting the um, requirements of the hea- health department um, for a hotel. Do we agree with the staff findings in this case?
No.
No.
Yeah, I would say no.
Yeah, I'll say no.
No.
So what are we saying no to, the whole thing?
To this, to the findings, that the um well, A, to the, we agree that the can, that that standard applies and that the findings of um staff are deficient somehow. So we're looking at the bottom of page five, um, dip to the middle of page six.
I would argue that the primary development activity in the vicinity is not single-filingly residential. It is a um, recreational use. It is a golf course.
I'll say no.
You're, you're disagreeing with the findings, Jenna?
Yes.
And, and was that Lee also?
Yes.
Okay. Let me see what I think. You know, I think I'm gonna say no to this one too, because the area around the development is pretty much planned. Okay. Okay, um, the next one is, um, the plan can be completed within a reasonable period of time. Findings show that we have the authority to place a reasonable amount of time to comply. And I believe that the recommendations set out what those time periods are. Do we agree with that finding? We're looking at page seven, item D.
I agree.
Yeah.
I agree.
I agree.
I agree.
I would agree too. I felt sorry for the community hearing nail pounding and construction going up for five more years.
Uh, okay, thank you. Um, the next item is item C, three E, which begins at the bottom of page seven and carries through most of page eight. This relates to, um, the streets are adequate to support the anticipated traffic and the development will not overload the streets outside of the planned area. Findings are, the traffic study says okay, the traffic review says okay. Um, I'm really summarizing horribly. And that there are uh, driveway width and improvement requirements.
I disagree that, uh, those findings. There are going to be a lot more traffic than they anticipating.
I disagree with the findings.
Yeah.
I disagree with the findings.
I disagree as well.
Yeah, I, I disagree and I want to go back to uh
Yeah.
to the, to the comp plan, excuse me. We're on page six, under land use objectives, number three, it states, prevent the concentration of uses which would overload streets and other public facilities. Do we have a legal link there between the comp plan and the city code?
Uh, this is one where I think we do, John, because it also talks about the streets being adequate to support the anticipated traffic.
It appears that way to me.
So I'm also gonna say no to this one.
Could you identify that page again, John?
On the comp plan?
Yes, sir.
It's page six and it's under land use objectives, number three.
Number three for me is protect the character and quality of existing residential areas and neighborhoods.
Hmm, I show that's page seven though. I got the number, maybe if I got the number wrong.
Okay, because that's my page six.
Is there an item number, John?
Page five. Take a look at page five.
Number five, page five is coordination with agencies.
All right, let me pull that up here.
I apologize for stirring the pot here. I just want to make sure I got it cited correctly.
Yeah.
Oh, I got it under land use, top of page six, under the objectives. It's an objective, not a policy. Got it? Okay.
All right, thanks.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, um so the next one is item C three F, proposed utility and drainage facilities are adequate for the population densities and type of development. Findings are that the applicant submitted a drainage plan. That looks like it will work with, will comply with public work standards um, to be verified when the engineering studies come in. Um, are, I'm sorry, engineering plans. Uh, are we in agreement with this finding and the applicability of this uh, standard?
I agree.
I agree.
I agree.
I agree.
I agree.
Okay, I agree also.
I disagree.
Oops, I missed one. Was that you, Phil?
It was.
Thank you for speaking up. Uh, okay, planning commission shall notify the applicant whether the foregoing provisions have been satisfied. Um, that's a procedural requirement. Did the city meet that requirement? So this is C three four, no, four, number four. Did we do our job as procedurally?
Is that referring to a final decision or uh? I'm not quite sure what that refers to.
Um, I believe that's what we're, we're doing right now.
Yeah, correct.
That is an administrative matter. We are required to inform the applicant, that's all.
So we haven't done it yet? Because we haven't decided yet, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
All right, that's what I thought.
Can you tell me where we are? I've lost track.
Sure, um, we're at the top of page, uh, we're at the end of page uh, eight and the top of page nine. It's item numbers four.
Okay, we haven't gotten to five yet on nine.
No, we have not. We're just talking about four.
Thank you.
So have we met our procedural requirement?
I don't know how to answer that, but I think yes, or we will by the end of this meeting.
Yeah, I, oh, let, let me put it this way. Do we agree that this is an appropriate standard for decision-making?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, I agree.
I agree.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, um, the next one is um, following this preliminary meeting, the applicant may proceed with his request for approval by filing an application for amendment to this ordinance. The finding is um, that uh the purpose of this provision is to identify the site as a PUD by changing the designation on our zoning maps, which would make it an SRR dash PD. Um, if it's approved. Um, however, before that approval happens, the applicant must return with the additional engineering plans, building plan, like plans, et cetera. Do we agree that the standard is appropriate, or the criteria is appropriate, and that we, uh, the city has met that standard?
I say yes. I agree.
I say yes.
I would agree.
I agree. Yes.
I concur.
Did we miss anyone?
Yeah, you missed me.
I, I don't think we missed you yet. I was waiting for you.
We've got a typo or an omission here. It is appropriate for the applicant to return with engineering site building and other required things.
Oh, okay. So, so is, just with that correction, Phil, are you a yes or a no?
With the correction, yes.
Okay. Okay, um let's look now at numbers six and seven. I think these are um, findings that um, we may attach conditions if necessary. And that uh it's our decision, and if, if approved, the staff report, the staff provided a list of recommendate, recommended conditions. Um, the second is that the, uh, once the um, final uh development is approved, it will be identified with the PD. Um, and the city is responsible for that, and th- these are both future actions, I think.
Yeah.
So, um, if you concur with both, yes or no, or if you want to split it into two, we can do that.
I'll concur with both.
Yes to both.
Yeah.
I can curve both of them.
That everybody? I agree also. Okay, C eight, the condition, or the standard is that um, building permits will only be issued on an approved plan. Um, changes must be submitted for processing as an amendment. Um, and the finding is that um we're not under uh, design review. Or this development is not under a design review. Um, the materials need to identify the placement of all of the um, buildings. And that we can uh, condition a decision on conformance with the overall design as submitted. Again, it's, it looks like a procedural item.
I would agree with that.
I agree with it.
I agree.
I agree, but can I make a note that I think that any commercial developments need to go through a design review, no matter where they're located?
Uh, yeah, we have to change our ordinance to do that, but I agree that that's, that's important.
I agree.
Yep, I agree.
Okay. Um, the next item is related, so this, we're looking at D on page ten. Development standards in the SRR zone, um, and these, so we'll go through these. Um, we're looking, first of all, at overall density is six point five dwelling units per gross acre that can be clustered. Um, they have to, um, let's see, maximum density, again, talking about dwellings. At least forty percent of the lot um, needs to be open space. Findings are, this does not apply, as this is a hotel project and does not include residential development.
I, I guess on this, I don't understand that a planned development is based off an R three code for residential for everything except density.
The uh, code makes differentiation recognizing SRR uh, allow some commercial uses. So by doing it that way, you don't look at density. So density is limited to residential uh, provisions only, but everything else in the R three zone, excuse me, um, applies.
So this is one where I'm gonna disagree in part. In that I think the larger buildings that are, we're calling the cabins um, are residential dwellings. Um, designed as short-term rentals and not necessar- not necessarily as a motel or hotel. And I understand that they'll be operated like a hotel, but so is every other short-term rental in town operated like a hotel. In that people make reservations from somewhere else on the internet and then they show up. So I am going to disagree that um that, that dwelling units don't apply in this case. that, that dwelling units don't apply in this case in part.
I agree with that.
So you agree to disagree?
Correct.
Yeah, you persuaded me.
Definition of dwelling says that they have to have four or more of the following. Refrigerator, cooking utensil, dishwasher, sink. I don't think those are going to be in those units. So can you call those dwellings? In that sense of the word?
Um, as I understand it, some of those items will be in at least the larger, the thousand square foot units.
Well, it requires four of them.
There is at least five.
So refrigerator, a microwave. Uh, the toilet, that's three, sharing a table, one, two, three, four. Sink, I, I guess so. I guess I might go as a dwelling.
Yeah.
I agree with their dwelling units.
They all have, yeah, they all have refrigerator, they all have a microwave. They'll have a sink, they have a toilet and a shower. So I guess that makes it dwelling.
So this is a deficiency in our, another deficiency in our zoning code, I think, that our definition of a dwelling definitely needs to be updated, but at this point in time, a plain reading of the, of our code says these are dwellings.
I'd like everyone to remember that I asked the question of Vito whether he was gonna design these, review them and construct them under the commercial code, and he was. That, I, I hear you and I a lot of me agrees with what you're saying and feeling. But if he's doing them under the commercial code, they're commercial buildings, they're not single-family residences.
So you are agreeing with the finding?
Reluctantly.
Why, why, why is that? Is there's something about the commercial code that does not make them suitable for residences?
No, 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 not at all. It's what their, what their designation is the day that they come off the press. And if he's saying they're commercial units and they're reviewed and constructed with those requirements, then they're commercial. So I'm not saying that, I, believe me, I struggle with this a lot. That clearly these are short-term rentals, um, that are going to be used to skirt the ordinance, but I'm just want to bring that to everybody's attention, that if they're built and regulated under the commercial code, then they're commercial buildings.
Okay, anybody want to change?
Now, you say, you say if they are. And, uh, that there's no documentation of that in the, uh, plan provided, is there?
No, and that's a good point, Bert. I mean, you know, when I asked the question, he said that was the way that he was going. So.
So maybe this could be, would be acceptable if there were an if in this thing someplace. If developed under the commercial code.
As a condition.
Yeah. And that's something that you're placing the burden on the city to enforce.
Yes.
Okay, as long as you, as long as we're aware of that.
All right, so I'm not sure where you are, Bert. Are you suggesting that we put an if in there and make this a condition that the, um, commercial building? What are we calling it? I'm sorry, I'm losing.
Structural code.
Building structural?
Oregon structural code instead of the residential code.
Okay. Um, so Bert, would you agree?
Yeah, I guess I'd.
If we modify this to include that a- and, and a condition that this standard is met?
Well, I, I would have to say for this to be met, the buildings would have to be built under the commercial code. Is that? Is that a correct statement?
And you would no longer see them as dwellings?
That's by definition, yes, not by, not by appearance.
Okay.
I don't.
How, how do the rest of you feel about that? Should we change, change that and make it a condition? Would, would you feel better about, um, the standard?
Yes, for me.
Yeah, I think so.
Are you referring to a condition of approval?
Yep.
A condition of acceptance of this conclusion, of this finding.
Yeah, I suggest that it sounds like based on what you picked out here, it might be I guess leaning toward denial. I, I'm, I'm just making some assumptions here. There's, there, there is, there's nothing wrong with changing D1 to simply say, provided it is. Oh, new member? Oh, okay. Um, uh, the, uh, there's nothing wrong in D1 to simply say that, uh, um, provide it is built to the building specialty code. In other words, just clarify that this is not a dwelling. And I think that would address that concern.
Thank you, Walt.
Yeah, that's worked for me, I think.
I think so too. It would work for me.
I'm sorry, I had a barking dog would. I really apologize, but this is important. Um, so, um.
I beat you on that. I have three barking dogs.
Yours aren't barking though, mine are.
Yeah, fortunately they're with my wife, it kind of works out. No, my only comment on D1 is change the finding to recognize that provided these are built to the building specialty code, requirements for commercial structures, you're making a finding that these are not dwellings. That's all. It doesn't change your final decision. It just clarifies this one finding.
Can I ask a question? Does this change the parking requirement?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so with that clarification and modification to the findings, where do we stand? On this?
I, maybe I need more information. I it has all the components of a dwelling in it, so no matter how it's built, I see it as a dwelling unit.
I might just suggest that we all think about penthouses in uh, Hilton hotels. There are six or eight of them in a hotel, but they're not residences. Even though they have all those amenities. So that's, that's where I'm going with this.
Um, you know, I, I I know these aren't intended to be full-time residences. But in all other aspects, regardless of how overbuilt they are, um, at least the nine cabins um, are residences. In my, in my view, that's, they're being built to be self-contained. Um, units where people can stay and cook and eat and party and sleep. Um, and so for me, even with that addition, I'm still a no on this. Um, standard or criteria. And I, I just want to pull and make sure that where, where we are on this. So would you mind telling me again with the, uh, modification?
I think it's too complicated to, uh, get all the conditions in here. I would, I would say, I would say no. And just.
I think they're residences. I say no.
With the modification, I.
Yes.
Jenna still says no.
Okay, tha- that was you, John?
Yeah, I'll stay with no.
Okay. Jenna, did you have?
I'm still a no.
You're still a no? And I'm missing somebody. Phil, have you spoken up?
Yeah, I, it's, I'm still a no.
Okay.
Which paragraph is this, or which item number?
We're on page 10, it's item D1.
D. D1, okay.
And, and you were a yes a minute ago with that modification, Bert, are you still?
Uh, I would, uh, I would say no on this. I would treat, I would treat those as potential short-term rentals and not, uh, not as hotel rooms.
Okay. Okay, um. The next item is D2 and 3. Um, these are the standards other than density in the SRR zone comply or conform to the R3 zone. Um, except that we can relax things if we want to. Um, the findings are compliance with the applicable, applicable, never can say that word, provisions in the R3 zone, um, are reviewed below, um, but essentially, um, the development meets the standard. And also that we will use the PUD procedure um, to evaluate the development proposals in this area. And we are in the process of doing that. So would you agree that these two um, standards have been met with the notation that we'll be looking at item D, item E below? Separately.
I would agree with it.
I'm also a yes.
I agree.
I agree.
I agree.
I agree.
That's a straight across the board. Okay. Um, the next item is D4, where it talks about the maximum lot coverage shall not exceed 40%. Um, the findings are that the lot coverage will, um, not exceed 33%. Uh, a- areas containing steep slopes are not developed, but will maintain vegetative cover, and I believe that, that's, that's it. Do we agree with the criteria and with the findings?
I agree.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, I agree. I agree.
Okay, I have seven yeses on that.
Yep.
Okay.
Did, did we find out for sure that the lot coverage will not exceed 33%? I thought that was it.
Um, questions were provided and submitted.
So, um, the plans that you reviewed show, um, at least 30, uh, a maximum of 33%?
I think, like 32.8, something like that. It was.
Okay, all right, so long as we've got a verification that that was.
Yes.
Okay, I agree.
Okay. Um, the next is D5. This is, um, talking about, uh, dry wells and whether the, uh, uh, storm runoff will be provided according to city standards. The findings are that compliance can be addressed when engineering plans are submitted. I mean, I believe that there is a requirement that, um, city standards are met uh, with respect to stormwater runoff. Um, and there's also a additional finding related to the wetlands study that shows no wetlands on the proposed property. A preliminary report from the Department of State Lands indicates that, um, a wetland delineation will be required before development can occur, which means they need to finish their study. Do we agree with that criteria and with that finding? And did I describe it properly?
I, I guess I, I don't think I can agree with it until we have a final approval from DSL. Regarding the wetland.
If I can jump here in here again, just provide some additional information on that. So the, um, uh, if you're, so when you're looking at approvals that might be required by other agencies and their input, um, including a final approval from another agency might be appropriate under, um, the city's independent obligation to coordinate with other agencies, but unless the specific approval is tied to, uh, a specific criterion in your code, um, that wouldn't be an appropriate basis to deny it. So we want to be careful about how we're um, about how we're thinking about that. Does that make sense?
I think the confusing thing here is that it starts out discussing, uh, high water table runoff, and then we veer off into the, uh, to the wetlands report, which really doesn't apply to, uh, to what's being addressed in, in the code. I don't have a problem with, with, uh, with that, the first two sentences there, 54E, uh, in the finding, but I I don't understand why the, uh, wetlands is brought into it other than as a comment, but, uh, it, it makes it difficult to say that you agree with it.
I think this is something that could be, uh, put in parentheses and moved to another place. Uh, it doesn't, it doesn't belong in the, uh, you know, in the context of the, uh, statement of the 4E. And I guess I would agree with the, those two sentences in the fine, the first two sentences in the findings, but the rest of that is extraneous to this particular item.
It is. It's a comment to the item. So the findings that just said, the compliance that this requirement will can, will be addressed when engineering plans are submitted. So I would agree with that.
Yeah.
They did that survey, dug all those holes, there's no water there. All they need now is someone to certify it.
Understand the purpose of putting that in there. It was the general commentary on water issues, high water table. It would seem to be an appropriate place, which is why I started off in a similar vein and started talking about wetlands. So it was, I couldn't find any other reasonable place to put that. And again, it is more of a parentheses than really, um, um, it basically just addresses the issue and concerns with the high water table.
Okay, and, um, so basically a report from Department of State. uh, report from Department of State lands indicates that a wetland delineation will be required um, before development can occur, and that's a state issue. Um, and then you say compliance with this requirement can be placed as a condition of approval. I, I think we can just eliminate that because they can't build if there's a wetland delineation. You know, they'll have to come back with a modified plan if, if that, um, you know, if there's, if there's a wetland to be found, if the state decides there is one. So can we just strike that last sentence? Compliance with this requirement can be placed as a conditional of approval since there isn't a criteria about wetlands delineations in our, um, in our code?
Uh, I mean, there is wetland notification overlay zone in our code.
One of the reasons it might be appropriate here is a condition of approval and you see these in, in when you've, um, decisions is because of the duty to coordinate with other agencies. So if there is a requirement from another agency that will, will need to happen before the development can occur, then you can require, um, that that occur before, that this, the, that the approval from the other agency come before the development. And it's, it's going to be required anyway, but sometimes you see that in these decisions.
Okay, so, um, with that said, even though these two paragraphs don't necessarily belong to each other, can we agree that? Well, I think, I haven't heard from everybody, but I think that we've agreed that, um, the compliance with the, um, stormwater runoff plan will be addressed when engineering plans are submitted. And agree separately that even though it's not related to this item, um, or doesn't directly respond to this criteria, that we can agree that that finding is accurate?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, I'll agree.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. Great. This is hard work, isn't it? Hacking through all this stuff. Uh, okay, um, the next area, um, I think was deferred from the previous page. These are the applicable development standards in the R3 zone, other than density, um, that relate to lot size, um, minimum lot width, um, frontage, uh, setbacks, and building height. And it also talks about lot coverage not exceeding 55% and we've already determined that that um, doesn't apply here, or I mean, that, that the standard is met earlier. Um, and I, so just looking at just overall lot size, minimum width, um, street frontages, setbacks, and height. Do we agree that those standards are applicable and that the, um, that the development, uh, meets those criteria?
Yeah, I agree on that.
I agree.
I'm struggling with E1, but I agree with the rest.
I agree. I would agree.
Okay, I agree. Um, did we hear from everybody? I'm sorry, I had my head in and I didn't see you. You have a hand raised, Lee?
He agrees.
Karen, I'm really sorry, but I'm gonna have to beg off. I've been sick all day and it's getting worse. Um, so, is there any way that I can vote prior? And send it to you?
I don't think we have a proxy voting system here, but we do have a quorum without you. If you want to make a, make a comment, um.
Well, I'm, I'm really sorry. I apologize, but I just, I can't hang in there. I was pretty much under the impression that this was going to be a done deal. And that based on a lot of the hard work that Walt did, that our hands were kind of tied and that we couldn't use a lot of this language in the comp plan. However, due to some great comments by people and some consideration for looking outside the box, my vote right now, my consideration would be, not a vote, my consideration would be to not approve this development. So, does that, does that work for you?
Um, yeah, thank you. I appreciate, I appreciate that, Lee. It's, it's good to know, um, your thoughts on this and they may influence um, the rest of the panel's decision. So, thank you. And feel better. I'm sorry you're sick. You, you haven't looked like it at all up to this point, so.
I, I hope that my decision does not create an opportunity for you to, I, I hope that you all use your best judgment and make the decision that's right for you, not based on what anybody else said. So.
Right.
Thank you all.
Yep, thank you, Lee.
Okay.
Get better.
Thank you.
Fairly.
Um, okay, so did, did we, did we get everybody in that last? Last one, I have, uh, six yeses and one partial no. Is that accurate?
Yes.
Yes, that's correct.
You know. That's accurate.
Have to confirm our confirmations. Uh, okay, and let's see, that was one through nine. So now we're on item F, um, which is parking. Um, it, plan unit development provisions do not specifically address parking as they are um, usually considered, um, as development progresses. For example, in a residential development, it's a unified project and it's appropriate to address parking. Um, our staff report indicates what the hotel requirements are. Um, it's, we've corrected, um, the staff report to show 53 spaces, um, are shown on the plan. And, um, that, that plan exceeds the requirements for a hotel, uh, with respect to parking. Do we agree that this, um, criteria is met?
I agree.
I agree.
Yeah, I agree. I agree.
I do agree.
I disagree.
Okay. Okay, um, the next one is based on the submitted materials, the proposed use is allowed in the zone and buildings meet or exceed setbacks. Um, the applicant submitted reasonably detailed elevations. Uh, we are granted authority to consider the entire project as a planned development, not just the layout. Um, and then there's some subjective notes about, um, the building appearance. And what are our final, um, development approvals, what conditions? That is suggested, any decision for final development approvals include the submitted design proposals. Okay, so when this comes back for, with engineering plans and building plans, that they should look uh, and, and the development should be, um, in this substantially the, uh, as presented here. So that there's not a lot of room for deviation between this plan, if approved, and the final engineer plans when they come to us. Do we agree that that's appropriate? And did I state it properly?
Do we have enough information really to, under the drawings he gave us, or the clarity there to make that decision? Pair.
Um, what do you think, Steve?
I don't know. I mean, I had a magnifying glass, I had to read some of the stuff under such small print and, and the detail was so hard to see, uh, and to use that as a basis for the other drawings. I'm not sure how that would work.
I don't think we've been provided enough drawings.
Yeah. Normally, when, when the developers give us drawings that are large enough to read and see some more detail.
And we don't have multiple elevations that other
Yeah.
that are usually required.
Well, as it stands now, you have elevations that don't match his specification count with regards to the development to the north. You have an incomplete community building plan. You have, uh, nine units in the center of this complex, which we're debating upon whether they're dwelling units or not. And I'm having a hard time reading the six units that are to the south. Mainly because they're A frames and, and yet you're taking the square footage measurements approximately three feet off of the floor level. And the, his site plan is incomplete in the fact that he's not showing any garbage collection facility.
So can I interpret your, not just you, Phil, but the comments so far on this, that the plans that we have now don't show enough detail to determine whether the final plans uh, match this proposed development? In other words, when the final plans come back, do we have enough information here to tell us whether the final plans meet the proposal? I, I'm asking that as a question. Is that what you mean to say?
That would have played for me, Karen.
Yeah, I would agree with that, uh, assessment. I would have a hard time correlating the two sets of plans.
Phil, what do you think?
I think the plans that I've got in front of me are incomplete.
Jenna?
Uh, I agree with Phil. They're incomplete.
Okay, so I'm going to disagree with this finding in that these plans don't give enough information for us to make a determination in the future about whether this final plan submitted meet this proposal. There's just not enough information here. Did I miss anybody? Bert, did you have?
Yeah, I think I agree with that, um.
Yeah, I agree with Bert.
Okay. Okay, so we're down to recommendation and conditions of approval. And before we go through the conditions of approval, let me ask if we are leaning toward approving or not? Based on the criteria that we've just gone through. Nobody wants to be first.
I am not leaning towards approval.
Okay, I am also not leaning towards approval based on the criteria as we discussed it.
I agree.
I'm not.
I'm not leaning toward approval.
I can't, I can't approve this development based on what's been presented to me.
Okay, was that, was that you, John?
Yeah, I'm not leaning towards approval, no.
I can't, I can't see all your faces on my screen, which is why I keep asking who's talking.
Who's?
Make sure we hear from everybody. Bert?
Bert, I'm, this is Bert. I'm not leaning toward approval.
Okay, um, with that said, um, it, I also am not leaning toward approval. I haven't already said that. And so in that case, is it necessary for us to go through with the staff recommendation and add conditions? Or shall we entertain a motion at this point?
Karen, would you need some assistance with the motion?
Um, well, you have uh, outlined at the end of your action, the, the three opportunities. So one is approve the application and adopt the findings and conditions contained in the report. And I don't think we can adopt all those conditions.
No, that's fine. All that.
The next option is to approve adopting modified findings or conditions. And then the last option would be to deny the application establishing the criteria as to why the application files fails to comply with, um, the decision criteria. Is that correct?
That is correct. It seems, well, obviously six to nothing for denial. Uh, part of your recommendation for denial or decision to deny has to do with establishing findings. And I was just asking if I could help uh, with the motion to incorporate those findings.
Sure. Based, based on what you've heard?
Yes, ma'am. Um, the recommendation or the motion would be to, uh, deny the application for the, uh, plan development citing failure to comply with comprehensive, compro- provisions in the comprehensive plan under C3B, page 1, item 2, and also page 6, item 1, failure, uh, noting that, uh, this is under C3C. This is not primarily, primarily a residential area, but a recreational area, just to correct the finding under item C3E, uh, inadequacy, uh, in failing to comply with comp plan policy on page 6, item number 3, um, under item D1, um, noting a change in finding to go from, um, a commercial hotel that the planning commission, uh, concludes that these are dwellings. Under item G, uh, the building plans and elevation material is insufficient to determine whether or not the, uh, anything returned to the commission would comply with those plans. And finally, corrections so noted during the discussion, for example, changing 43. And finally, corrections so noted during the discussion, for example, changing 43 to 53. And I think there was a um, uh, scrivener there that had to be changed. So that would be the basis of it and all findings would follow.
Okay. Was that clear enough to base a motion? Do we need to restate that? Um, let's ask our attorney.
Uh, I I for purposes of the procedural, that's sufficient and specific. Um, if there are additional items that you want to reconsider or um, um, or remove from that, then this would be your opportunity to do that.
Okay, the thing that I would like to amend is with respect to the dwelling units that in appearance only a portion of the development are dwelling units and that the um, you know, as a result, we need to reinvestigate or the applicant needs to respond to the density issue with respect to that that portion of the of the development.
Got it.
Any other additions or subtractions from the commission? I I wasn't able to turn my pages fast enough when you were talking about the different provisions, but essentially we're looking at the um, streets. The road access um, being incompatible. Um, the question about density and residential dwellings. And what else did I miss?
There's also compatibility with the area development and residential harmony. There was there was one policy pointing out there. I did take notes on each of them.
Okay. Did that cover everything, commission?
And then
I think it did. Can we get this written out? So it's specific.
Well, you have an issue here that you're on day seven of the 120 day. And so if you were to if you were to postpone a final stamp of approval, we would be bouncing up against the 120 day time limit. I guess I'm confident I could go ahead and put the findings in place and um, it will be reviewed by everyone, but I think I think Karen, you could always make whatever changes are necessary. I'm not trying to sidetrack the planning commission's involvement. All that is that we're running with the time limit.
Well, that's not what I meant. I mean, can we get it written out here specifically? So we've got some guidelines. I didn't mean to do it for future.
Oh, no, I am going to put this in writing. But not this evening. I got a lot of work to do on this one.
Can can we make a motion to deny citing Walt's findings? Would that be adequate?
Well, you still need to have a motion that would say we're denying it for the following reasons. And and I think the attorney will back me up on that.
Okay. So let's just reiterate those reasons and that way we can
Yeah, that's what I was trying to get at.
Okay, um, there would be a motion to deny the application of the 34 unit hotel complex based on the following, failure to comply with provisions in C3B regarding the comprehensive plan and its implementing policies. You know, just note the page and number that seemed to be the way we went.
So sorry, well, we're talking about um, based on your findings.
Correct. All that I'm doing is going back through those findings that need to be modified. In other words, everyone agreed that it looks like they meet the setbacks. We don't have to reinvent that wheel. So I think that's a good point. So again, the motion would be to deny the hotel 34 unit hotel based on failing to comply with the following decision criteria. Item C3B regarding comprehensive plan policies on page one, item two, and page six, number one. Failure to comply with item three, no C3C. If uh, change the finding that this is not a residential area, but a recreational area. Comply failure to comply with item C3E inadequacy uh, with regard to traffic, and that would be under comp plan, page six, item number three. Item under C5 is just a scrivener's change. Under item D1, just simply note that the planning commission concluded that a portion of the site uh, includes dwellings and not necessarily part of the hotel. And the dwelling is based on the definition. Item G is the uh, finding that the submitted plans were inadequate to allow determination whether or not future plans would comply with any approval. And along with that would be corrections so noted during our review, for example, 43 to 53.
Well, did you mention three C substantial harmony of the proposed plan?
Yes, that that was one of the comprehensive plans.
I thank you. I dismissed it. Okay.
Someone like to move that the commission, I don't want to state the um, I don't want to put words in anybody's mouth, but could could we make a motion that um, uh, that we agree with the findings as the revisions to the findings as Walt stated? Is that appropriate? As as was just stated?
I believe so. Or you can say so moved.
So moved.
Phil? Is there a second?
I say then. Go ahead, Jenna.
Okay, and okay, and um, is there any further discussion? It's been moved in second to deny uh, the application as as Walt stated.
Hi.
Discussion, all in favor, say aye.
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 And any opposed, say no. Okay. All right. Thank you, everybody, for your close attention. Um, do we have any future business? Scott? Anything on the horizon?
Uh, nothing on the near future that I can remember.
Okay.
At this point.
Um, I want to thank everybody from the bottom. Go ahead, Jenna.
Sorry, I'm gonna chime in here. Um, is there anything that we can do, put a moratorium on certain things moving forward since we have since we know that our zone zoning codes are going to be redone? That we can postpone some development moving forward until we have an accurate representation that's been updated?
That's that's an attorney question.
So that's that's a really complicated. I mean, moratoriums are for um, sort of emergency situations and very specific, very narrow grounds, and it takes a lot to um, to get them in place and then to maintain them um, for that process.
So it just seems that our our some of our zoning codes do not, as we saw today, do not necessarily match up with our comprehensive plan, and it's been noted by the city manager at the city council workshop last week that there will be a priority moving forward to rectify that. But we're still at this time period until that's done dealing with potentially outdated code.
Yep. So the issue with the moratorium is that they are they're going to apply really narrowly. So if you were going to pursue those for certain things, they could be effective, but the 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 cost and the and the effort to get that up and running for many, many things would um, probably detract from from the other efforts and that the city's doing to actually update the comp plan. And I get, you know, that's that's just an off the top of my head answer. Those this is also a really complicated legal question about which which situations a moratorium would actually be appropriate for, and and by that I mean legally defensible.
Karen?
Karen? I'm sorry, I I was muted again. Go ahead, Phil.
Would it be possible to get a statement or drawings or some idea as to what the city is planning to do for Dorcas? Simply to have as additional reference material when this comes back to us?
Um, I'm sure we could if if those plans have been finalized.
Or even just a general description because Dan went over it really fast and I missed about half of it, but the more information I have, the better judgments I can make. And right now, Dorcas is a big part of this of this package.
Right. I I agree with you, Phil, and I think that's um, that we can ask Dan to provide that to us. For sure. Yeah. Anybody else have comments or you just want to go to bed?
I want dinner.
Uh, well, I again, I want to just thank every I want to thank staff for all the hard work. Um, I really appreciate Ms. Miller for being here um, to help us guide guide us through this. It's been complicated. Clearly, the city um, has deep feelings about this and the engagement level has been superb on this. So thank you, everybody, and I also want to thank the commissioners. It's been a lot of work as volunteers to go through all of this together. Um, it's been an an education for all of us and um, I just can't wait to work with you again on something big, especially a comp plan review. And with that, um, I'm going to declare the meeting closed.
Thanks, Karen.
Good night, everyone.
Night.